Good evening. I now call the order, the May 4th, 2022, second session of Town of Stoughton's annual town meeting. This is town, this town meeting is being held in person at the Stoughton High School auditorium at 232 Pearl Street. This meeting is also being broadcast live through the Stoughton Media Access Corporation and is also being recorded for future broadcasting. Please rise and stand as you are able and join me in pledging allegiance to our national flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. A couple of notes regarding the necrology, there was a request for us to make a, provide a list of those recently departed from the Town of Stoughton. I do not have that available, but I do promise for the next town meetings, usually we have one in the fall, we'll have that list available. Again, I'd like to just say we have members of the select board here. We have the Chair, Deborah Roberts. We also have Vice Chair, Stephen Cavey, and members of, other members of the select board. We have Lou Jito, Joe McCrisky, present here. We also have the school committee members, Sandra Grope, Chair, Katie Pena Inokian, Vice Chair, Catherine Weiss, President, and do we have Lindsey correctly here? Hi Lindsey, I'm sorry, yep, hi. We also have Dr. Robin Grimm, our Town Manager, and Dr. Thomas Robb, Superintendent of the Stoughton Public Schools. Also joining me up here, my far left, we have Vaughn Inokian, Chair of the Finance Committee, John Insavino, Vice Chair of the Finance Committee. We have Bill Rowe, Town Accountant, Kelly Johnson, Stephanie, I should say Samantha Rigo, and Stephanie Carrara from the Town Clerk's office, and Stephanie Carrara obviously is our Town Clerk. To my right, we have Brian Winter, Town Council. We have the Deputy Moderator, Dr. Glenn Tucker. And we have the Board members all the way down to the right, Board, the Select Board members that I already introduced. At this point in time, I'd like to ask the precinct chairs, hopefully they have everybody signed in, and we're gonna take the precinct count right now. I'm asked to hold on for a minute. Okay, we're gonna start with Juan Fox, Precinct 1.
Precinct 1 has 11 members present.
11 members, Precinct 1. George Stolinski, Precinct 2.
15.
15, Precinct 2. Matt Callis, Precinct 3. 17, present, Precinct 3. Julie Jito, Precinct 4. 20, Precinct 4. Kamel Drews, Precinct 5. 13, Precinct 5. Christine Yakabachi? Yakabucci, uh, Yakabucci, 15, thank you Christine. Diane Dolan, Precinct 7. 10, Precinct 7. And David Sheehan, Precinct 8.
14.
14 for Precinct 8. Stand by for a total. What do we have? All right, we have 115 town meeting reps present, and we only needed 85 for a quorum. So I declare that we fulfill our quorum requirements. We will proceed. A couple reminders, there's water outside, and we're allowed to have water in the auditorium here. I was asked to just remind people, please don't, do not eat chocolate or candies or other food items in the auditorium. You know, yeah, as George would say, no snacks. We appreciate your compliance with that. A couple of other points, I'd like to also read a brief statement. We know of two people that were present at the town meeting on Monday, May 2nd, who have since tested positive for COVID-19, and one unconfirmed case. The CDC and the Commonwealth have not changed the guidance on public gatherings in light of recent uptrends in COVID-19 infections, so masks do remain optional, and there were masks on the outside, we have some masks inside available for use, and also hand sanitizers are around for anybody's use. But I also ask, please spread out in the auditorium, don't, you don't have to sit next to anybody, there's plenty of room, I believe there's like 860 odd seats in the auditorium, and it's probably less than 200 of us here this evening, so there's plenty of room up top, there's plenty of room if you don't, if you want to disperse, just want to practice some safety protocols. By leaving up to the town meeting wisdom, Representatives' wisdom, to sit where you want, sit where you desire. Since Monday evening, this auditorium has been cleaned. Thank you to Dr. Robin, George, and Sandy for cleaning the auditorium. And also, as I mentioned, mask and hand sanitizer has been supplied for use for town meeting. Obviously, it's optional, and again, for social distancing, please feel free to sit anywhere, anywhere you so desire, because the clicker will you, will work anywhere in this auditorium. Okay, with that said, I just want to mention that procedural motions that we made and passed on Monday evening are still in effect, and will be in fact, in effect throughout the entire town meeting. Just a couple of reminders, if there, if there is a reason to suspend the rules, obviously you have to make the motion, needs a second, and requires the two-thirds vote to pass that motion. And at any time during the debate, to move the question, which means to cut off the debate, that also requires the two-thirds vote. At that time, when someone moves a question, and it's a second, we have a second on it, will require a two-thirds vote to stop the debate. And then we'll go, if that passes, then we'll go directly to voting on the article. Okay, if I recall, and I believe I recall correctly, we were on Article 13, the General Fund Operating Budget, and we did have the motion made. We had presentations by Dr. Grimm and Dr. Robb. We had the Finance Committee and the other department committee reports, and now we're, we're talking about the budget. There were a couple, there was a motion made and then it was withdrawn. So that's where we are this evening, okay? Do we have any motions? John Insavino? I recognize you, state your name and precinct number, please.
John Insavino, Precinct 4. Mr. Moderator, I, I did submit a modified chart, thanks to Mr. Rowe, he caught a math error on my part, and it went into you yesterday, plenty of, much more than the 24 hours ahead. And what this chart does is it, it follows up on what we already did for the enterprise accounts, and that is to reduce the DPW Superintendent's salary.
I need you to make the motion first, before you describe it.
Okay. I, I would move that we reduce the budget item numbers as printed on the paper that's out on the table and on the virtual table titled, "Proposed Changes to DPW Superintendent's Salary: Reduce the Salary From $151,886 to $140," submitted by myself on 5/3/2022, and it's Rev. 2, and it lists all the lines and the numbers that would change within the And I would move that we take this up for consideration.
It moved and seconded by Dave Laurie, Precinct 6, is it Dave? Okay. All right. I see Brian Holmes, you're there too, he made the motion for us. The way I see this motion working, John, is when Bill Rowe, the Town Accountant, calls each department, you're gonna have to hold that department. Otherwise, I don't see how else it's gonna work, and we'll come back to that department.
Well, my concern with that would be if, if the other motion that is out there is presented and passed, it's gonna lock down every other department other than line 421, because that motion is to accept everything the Finance Committee did, and the only thing the Finance Committee didn't approve was Department 421. This change is gonna affect 131, 421, 433, 650, 440, and 450. And it's just a matter to remove the $10,103 to reduce the salary. As you heard the other night, when we did the enterprise accounts, the Town Manager was in favor of the new amount, because that's what they used as the upper limit for the advertisement for the new superintendent. I leave that to your discretion, what you wanna do.
Well, let me ask you, if you're making this as a motion, like a sweeping motion, all, all the department numbers that you don't mention here, they'll be considered closed? That's what it looks like you're trying to do?
No, I'm looking to change these lines in these departments in order to, this is the problem, when somebody's salary is spread out in so many different places, to remove that one, or to reduce that one item, these are all the changes that need to be made. Now, the list is, you know, it's longer than just the individual line where it changes, because it also changes the subtotals, then it changes the totals, and, you know, it kinda cascades, but...
It reverberates throughout the budget, the department?
It's a spider web.
Right.
And that's what happens when you have various percentages of a salary assigned to different departments.
Let me just confer with Town Council in one minute.
Sure.
There's no other motion, right, because Holmes' motion, he hasn't made it.
Correct, but how do I proceed?
I think you could do it this way, as long as Mr. Rowe can keep track of it, because now this is gonna be the new motion, and so when you now, what you're gonna do next is go through each budget, right?
Yep.
So this is gonna be the new budget for those items.
Just for those items, how about the items that I'm not mentioning, that are untouched? But is that one of the clothes?
No, no, he's only moving to amendment amounts.
Okay. All right. All right, I have to confirm with Town Council, so making this motion, this would just amend these departments, but then we'll still go through the, the regular budget by department number?
Yeah, I mean, if that's, if you're gonna go through the whole budget...
That's your intent, right.
...by department, I could put these on hold, but my concern was with the other motion, those, that could be a moot point, because they could be closed.
Well, that motion's on on the floor right now, yours is.
Yes, but, I mean, are you gonna take this motion and say, look, in order to do this, you want Bill to read all the departments and just put a hold on these?
Can you explain this, Town Council, the best way to explain it?
Sure, and part of my response through you, Mr. Moderator, to the meeting, is just to make sure that Mr. Rowe can track this, because what'll happen is, if Town Meeting approves this amendment in its entirety, then this becomes the new baseline for the main motion, so we, when we go through it, you're only asking that these numbers be amended to reflect what's on your sheet, correct?
Yes, and...
You're not asking that Town Meeting vote the budget as to these items, just that they accept these amendments.
It would just be to accept these changes, which the, the Town Accountant, by the way, has not been kept in the dark. I talked to him about this, I sent it to him by email and talked to him to make sure he had all the numbers and, and he was prepared for it.
Okay, and so I just wanna be clear, and perhaps, Mr. Rowe, you can respond to this, if you're so willing and the moderator allows it, I just wanna make sure that if Town Meeting passes this schedule, that we can track these numbers, so that when we go back and do vote on the budget by department, we're voting on the amended numbers.
Yes, that's my, that's my intent, is to amend these lines as shown in this list.
And I'm just trying to avoid the confusion, so when we get to a particular department, let's just take 131, for example.
Yep.
When we get to the main motion to vote that department, we'll be voting, assuming your amendment passes, on your proposed number. And if, if Mr. Rowe can confirm, we can track that going forward, just to make sure there's no confusion on what Town Meeting will vote if this amendment is accepted. Just trying to avoid the confusion.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator and Town Council, Bill Rowe, Town Accountant. Yeah, there's only a change to four departments, so I've already got the changes noted, so if the motion passes, I'll just read the amended totals, which obviously will not agree with what you have in your Town Meeting books, but I'll, I'll mention that it's as amended, so.
I'm sorry, Bill, what was that last part? I didn't hear it.
I'll mention the amended number.
Okay.
And just, the members need to be aware that the budget that's in your Town Meeting book, that'll be different than what, than what I read for those four departments.
And, and just to be clear, the bottom line for the general fund did not change.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Insavino. Okay, the motion is on the floor, it's amended motion to the main motion, which is the town budget. Okay, it's been seconded by Mr. Laurie over here. So now, let's open it up for some technical questions. Is there any technical questions? And Mr. Holmes, I'll get to your motion later.
Brian Holmes, Precinct 3. We ended last, last town meeting with a motion that I had on the floor, and I, I went home and before midnight on Monday, I filed this motion again, so that it would be within good order for you to not receive criticism about, you know, not taking the motion within 24 hours and some other questions that came up. This gentleman's sitting in front of a microphone, and I'm at the back of the room, and you took his before you took mine. Mine was filed at midnight on Monday, and I think there's some people in this room that were expecting my motion to be discussed and acted upon tonight before that, so I don't know if it's within order, but I'd like to make a motion that we table this motion and take mine.
Well, I'm gonna call your motion to table out of order right now, so I can explain his motion. He sent his motion days ago to me.
Monday noon time.
Monday noon time. So, your motion was made and withdrawn, and you sent it to me Monday evening.
I did.
All right, so I called for motions this evening, and he's the first one, I understand he was sitting at the table with a microphone, but he made his motion first.
Okay.
Okay, we can, once his motion, if it either goes up or down, then we entertain your motion. Okay, because the budget still has not been gone through yet, so just in fair process of what's going on here this evening, transparency. He happened to be in front of a microphone, I can't control that. Next time, sit next to a microphone, you know? I know, I understand, but we'll get to your motion too. Okay, enough said, sir. You withdrew your motion, I did receive your motion Monday evening, I acknowledge that. All right, on the amended motion, any technical questions? Carolyn Campbell, please identify yourself with name and precinct number, please. Now, this is on the amended motion.
Right, I have a question, hi Carolyn Campbell, Precinct 4. With this amended motion, what, does this mean we're voting on these departments now? Or are we just amending, because aren't we changing these departments?
We are, if I, if I stand corrected, we are just changing the bottom line on those department numbers, oh, the line item numbers.
The motion was to amend these lines as shown in this table.
Right.
It's not to actually vote the budget, it's to accept these new numbers.
Just to change the numbers.
But we're changing numbers in multiple departments, so we're taking money away from one, some departments and putting it in other departments?
We're taking the superintendents, the DPW Superintendent, money, the salary, to reduce that, you affect Department 421, 433, 440, 450, 650, and, and, yeah, those, those five.
Okay, so my question is, are we, if that's the motion that's on the floor, then don't we need to suspend the rules to open up the budget to all of those departments, so that we can move the money or discuss moving the monies accordingly?
I'll refer to Town Council on that one.
I don't think there's any procedural rule of Town Meeting that prevents you from acting on this motion. If the motion is accepted by Town Meeting, the motion to amend, then you're gonna proceed through the budgets as you normally would.
But, we are discussing changing the budget, so I believe our procedure was been to go through the budget, and any department we wanted to discuss, put a hold, and then we would discuss those budgets, and shouldn't this, that process be done before this motion?
Mr. Moderator, if I may, the reason, the reason this covers so many different departments is because that's where the salary shows up, and the intent is to reduce the salary to 140, and these changes would be required to do that in these departments. It wouldn't be required to go in a Department 131, that's where I chose to put it.
Just a minute, please. I just asked Town Council, if we do change it the way Mr. Insavino wishes, and he does pass his body, someone else, as we go through that department number, can change it back to the original, if this body so votes it?
Um, I'm just...
I know it's a little different, a little difficult to understand, we're doing a little different process this year, but there's a motion on the floor regarding that.
Now, I, I don't have a necess, I just, you know, so we are discussing some of the motions, we are gonna discuss amending some of the departments, the ones that are up on the...
On the list, yes.
On the list, and then we're gonna go through the budget and say which departments we wanna hold? So, wouldn't we want to...
We're gonna double, double, pretty much on these, on some of these, these departments on this list, we may touch it more than once, change it more than once, if this body so votes that way.
All right, I just, I think this motion's making the whole process more confusing, that if we had gone through the list first, said we wanted to hold all these, then made a motion to suspend the rules, to discuss this whole motion at that point, it would have been clearer and more efficient, but thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You're welcome. Any other questions on this process, Mr. Stolinski? Well, I'll get to you, I'm sorry, Mr. Garin, I'll get to you, yep. George, we can't hear you. Name and precinct number again, please.
George Stolinski, Precinct 2. Do the red numbers total out to the black numbers on this sheet, making the numbers technically even?
Yes, they do. The red numbers are deficit...
Correct, so all you've, all you've done is, all you've done on this sheet, besides confusing everybody, is taken a reduction in some departments, adding it elsewhere. That's all it basically boils down to.
That's all it is.
And the bottom line number, when we look at the book, is the same as it was earlier.
The 112 million plus is the same.
Right, thank you.
Go ahead, Bill Rowe.
The, they, they balance to zero, except for the three red numbers at the bottom, those are enterprise, we've already acted upon those, but the, the, the numbers above the last three, those all balance to zero.
Yes, the bottom three, the bottom three were, just for tracking purposes, that the salary went down, we took care of those on Article 89.
All right, hang on a minute, I have other people who wanna be recognized. Mr. Garin? Please rise and state your name and precinct number, then your question. Gotta turn it forward, push it forward. Push it towards you.
Jim Garin, Precinct 6. Through you, no, I guess to you, to whoever can answer it, if, if this, Mr. Insavino's revision is, is accepted, does that mean that this, the whole budget would be acceptable to the, to the Finance Committee?
I have no idea, this comes from me as a precinct rep, it doesn't come from the Finance Committee.
I understand, but the, it seemed that the only restriction that was on this budget was that the, the Finance Committee didn't approve this DPW budget.
That's what, that's what started this, yes, the Department 421 was not approved.
And the, and so if, if your change is accepted, then the Finance Committee accepts the DPW budget?
Finance Committee has not met on this.
Don't forget, come through the moderator, I may not want you to go ask that question. All right, you've been asking numerous questions, I'll give you one more question, what's your final question, Mr. Garin?
The, my, my last, my last question would be, what happens to the $10,000 if this is accepted?
Mr. Insavino?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, the $10,103 that would be taken from the various departments, I have moved into the Finance Committee in various lines that is in there, that's the Department 131. That was based on what we've got for bills and, and some of the issues you heard Monday night.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garin. Stephanie, who's next? Mr. Lenahan, please rise and state your name and precinct number, please. This is a question now.
Thank you, John Lenahan, Precinct 1. And, and that was the nature of my question, was adding $10,000 to two other line items feels like just putting on a little gravy. What's the justification for not just taking that out of the budget?
Mr. Insavino, can you answer that?
To keep the bottom line of the budget, it had to go somewhere, all right? And based on what you heard Monday night, with the raise, the increases in costs for supplies and printing and so forth, I increased the Finance Committee budget to account for some of these things, because the Finance Committee will be taking over, producing this book next year, and there was a small amount that ended up just going into the reserve fund. I think it was $4,103 that went to the reserve fund, $6,000 went to the various lines in the, in the FinCon budget, between legal consultant fees, supplies, as it's listed here, the advertising in Frank, the printing, we heard all these things Monday night with some of the, some of the discussion from the Town Manager about the rise in cost of all these things, and that's where I put it, it's just what I chose to do.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Fox, please rise, state your name and precinct number, please.
Juan Fox, Precinct 1. Question is, is that a typo on the fifth line, where it looks 5.9 million on the left and 59.9 million on the right?
I would say it's a typo, yeah. That's what you call fat fingers.
Could you identify that, Mr. Insavino, what line is it?
That would be the subtotal for Public Works, it, it should have been, that should have just been 5,931,490.
Okay, the proposed amount should be 5,931,490, right? Okay, does everybody note that? Okay, I, I hear you, I understand that, okay, good question. Any other questions? We, we, okay, Mr. and Ms. Bronson, please state your name and precinct number, please. Can't hear you, push it towards you. Turn the microphone towards you and then slide the, slide the switch toward you.
Denise Bronston, Precinct 2. Why are you reducing this man's salary? I mean, he's probably, already has expenses that he's accounting for.
All right, we're not, on this list, it doesn't show a person's salary, it's using these line items and descriptions. Ms. Insavino?
The, the reason the salary was being reduced is the former, the former superintendent left, a new superintendent is being searched for, and the 140 is what the maximum was on the advertisement for the new position, or for the person in that position. That's where the reduction comes from.
Thank you, does that answer your question? All right, anybody, any other questions? Okay, do you know who was for us? What are we?
Hi, Amy Fleaf, Precinct 4.
Before, oh, hang on a second, Amy, my apologies. It's easy, if speakers wanna come down to the front row somewhere, we can sit somewhere in the front row, at least in the middle, for the future, that's okay, we'll start after these couple of speakers. Go ahead, Amy.
Hi, through you, Mr. Moderator, just in the effort of transparency, can you tell me which departments that you went to to ask, to see if they could use $10,000? to see if they could use $10,000 more before you decided to put it towards a committee on which you sit?
Yeah. What's the question again, please?
Well, there's $10,000 extra now in the budget if we were gonna reduce it from the line items for the supervisor. And I'm asking which departments that he went to to see if they could have used that money before deciding that the Finance Committee was the best place to use that.
John, I don't know if you can answer that.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee has received bills very recently, which we weren't even aware of as far as the cost, you know, and some fees have already been paid, which we haven't seen anything on yet. But when you see what the book costs this year, $5,700, what you heard the town manager say the other day was, you know, the advertising, the freight, your consulting fees, which I just, I put money there because we're gonna be taking over the book. Printing and stationery has gone up and office supplies have gone up. And again, I ended up moving some of the money just to the reserve fund. If people don't want to do it, that's up to the people.
Thank you. I just need the question answered. Thank you very much, Anzavino. Mr. Cavey, please rise, state your name and precinct number, please. Is this thing on? Good.
Just a couple of questions. First is, looks like we're moving this money into the Finance Committee accounts. I believe the Finance Committee has already voted on this budget, on their own budget. It felt satisfied the original amounts were correct. So presumably, there's no expectation of spending this money. There wasn't before, before tonight. From the DPW, the salary also wasn't being advertised for this difference, which is about $10,000. So whether it's in the Finance Committee budget or in these other budgets, it seems like there's no plan to use the money. And with the materiality of 0.008% of the entire budget, it seems like it's a lot of work to decide where we're gonna put money that we have no intention of spending. And so my question to you is, first, is that actually true? Is there an expectation of the Finance Committee actually spending this money?
Yeah, yes, because we have been told that we need to have more money for a secretary because town staff isn't gonna be doing the book. We're gonna have to do the book. And all the costs are gonna come from the Finance Committee. And from what we've seen, these costs have all gone up. And to answer your other question, the town manager specifically stated Monday night, the job was advertised for $140,000. And that's the salary I'm reducing it to.
Thank you.
Sure, Dr. Graham, go ahead.
I don't disagree with any of Mr. Anzavino's...
You gonna use the microphone?
Oh, it's higher than I am. I don't disagree with Mr. Anzavino's responses, but I do want to point out that we did add money for the secretary for the book. We did add a significant proportional to their budget line item already to cover some costs. So I don't want that to be lost or assumed that that's part of that.
No, you add, yes, you increase the money for the secretary.
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Mr. Bob Cone? I need a second. Oh, he's been waiting over here. Let me, we didn't get a chance to debate either, so. Right, we have to have a moment to debate. Okay, here's my rule. Moderator's rule, effective immediately. If you're gonna shout out, I warn you once. Second time, I'd ask you to sit in the cafeteria or in the corner or something for a couple minutes. All right, because you can't, we can't run the meeting this way. I'm trying to do it most efficiently and effectively as possible. Trying to be fair to everybody. I know budget issue is confrontational sometimes. I think we'll get through it. We're gonna move it along as quickly as we can. But people are here for a reason, to discuss and debate. So let's proceed accordingly with respect and mutual, you know, respect of each other. Sir, can you rise and state your name and precinct number, please?
Greg Pocraca, precinct two. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was under the initial impression that because we determined that this should be 140 instead of the 151, 883, that we were gonna be saving the town the $11,000 instead of playing the shell game and moving it to another department which needed the money. So now that I realize that we're moving it to a department for which the person who proposed this sits on, that feels a little strange, so I guess my thoughts are...
Do you have a question?
No, I just had a statement.
Okay, you can make your statement at the end here.
So...
If you don't have a question, please take your seat. We'll call up on comments in a moment. Any other questions, please? Wait, we're going to debate now. I see no other hands up. We're gonna move into debate or commentary. All right, anybody have any statements to make, pro and con debate? Ms. Colburn, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Pat Colburn, precinct four. I just want to applaud Mr. Anzavino for doing this. It's something I would have done when I sat on Finance Committee. We try not to put more money in a budget for a position than we know we'll spend. It's not unusual to put money in finance reserve. He made the motion. He chose where he wanted the money to go. I don't see anything nefarious, and I'm really surprised to hear the comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else for comments? I know you're gonna, I would just want to hear some other debate before we move to move the question. Would the gentleman go from... Do you have, did you have a comment? Debate? Nope, okay. All right, then I guess we go to Mr. Bob Cone. Please rise to the microphone, state your name and precinct number, please. I can ask someone to bring the microphone to you, sir. Wow, please handle that with care.
Move the question, please. I apologize. Precinct five, Bob Cone.
Okay. Question's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. That means we have to, we're gonna have a, I'll just do a voice vote unless it's clear that it's not two-thirds. Moving the question means cutting off debate. Then after, if that passes, we're gonna vote on this amended motion. A typo? Okay. We identified that the typo, the subtotal Public Works, proposed amount is not 59 million, but 5,931,490. Everybody should understand that. So now we're gonna vote on cutting off debate. By voice vote. All those, was there another question? I did not state. I'm sorry, what is it? John Anzavino, can you correct the number on, since it's your motion?
Yes. Through you, Mr. Moderator. The subtotal for public work should not read 59 million. It should read 5,931,490.
I thought I read that, but my error if I did not read it correctly. All right, so we're cutting off debate. The motion's been moved and seconded. By voice vote, all those in favor of cutting off the debate, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right, on the amended motion. We have something up on the screen? Okay, stand by. Okay, once it, the, okay. All right. Okay, we're gonna vote now. 20 seconds. It should be on the screen. Use your clickers. Okay, stand by, technical issue. All right, let's not panic the town clerk. Stand by, please, technical issue. Thank you all for bringing that. Hey, we have problems with Netflix sometimes at night, right? When you sit there and watch? And Hulu too. All right, stand by, please. Ask the gentleman, ask the gentleman back. Okay, I'll say that. Thanks, Jeff. Just a note to the audience, when you do come up to the microphone, leave the microphone on. We're told that if you leave it on, it's gonna delay. The person in the back there will control the soundboard. So we're good to go. Kevin, right? Thank you, Kevin, for doing your job tonight. Appreciate it. Okay, the software froze for a minute. We're gonna try this again. All right, this is for the amended motion. Please have your clickers in hand. Are we ready to go? All right, please vote now. You have 20 seconds. Everybody good? If you need help, call clerk's office. Call Trish. It's okay, software is software. Okay? Okay, all we need is a simple majority. So the amended motion passes, 78 yes, 37 no, one abstention. All right, so that now becomes the amendment to the main motion. Or the main motion as amended, I should say. Main motion as amended. Get used to that. All right. Next, Mr. Holmes, did you want to make your motion? Please state your name, precinct number, and make your motion.
Brian Holmes, precinct three. I move that the budgets that receive a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee be voted on as a whole without further discussion, debate, or questions.
Who wants to take credit for seconding? We need a name. Jim Curtin, precinct? Four. Thank you, Jim. Okay, moved and seconded. Just stand by for one second. Town council just informed me that we're referring to the amended motion now on your motion. Those are the numbers you'd be referring to because the main motion has been amended. All right, so...
So I should accept that as a friendly amendment?
I don't believe you have to accept it. That's just the way it is now.
Okay. Fair enough.
Okay. So can I hear your motion one more time, Brian?
I move that the budgets that receive a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee be voted on as a whole without further discussion, debate, or questions.
Okay, and it has been seconded. Okay. Any technical questions on that? Because we have to explain, I have to explain that a little bit in fairness to the town meeting reps. That means any...
Can I make a summary at the end?
Are you gonna summarize now?
I'll just summarize now.
Well, I just want to further clarify that the town meeting reps said. This means that everything except DPW 421, and all the other, if this is a, if this passes, which is fine, I don't have a, you know, a horse in the race. If this passes, then all the other departments are closed. Correct? Is that my, is that what you state?
Yes.
Okay, except which department's open for discussion?
Correct, DPW.
DPW, okay. As long as everybody understands that, that's fine. I just want to make sure everybody stands it, understands that. All right, we have, I'm gonna ask for technical questions on your motion.
Sure.
Okay, then we'll go into debate, and then you can summarize. All right, technical questions? Sandra Souza? Please state your name, precinct number, please.
Sandra Souza, precinct one. So this means then that normally we go through each budget. Town accountant reads the numbers. We can place a hold on the ones we want to go back and question. All of that's gone.
Except that one department.
So we have no ability to...
If you so choose.
Correct. But if this, if Mr. Holmes' motion passes, we have no ability to go into any of those budgets and ask any questions or go through any detail.
Okay, I'm just gonna ask town council to clarify that, if you would, town council?
If Mr. Holmes' motion passes...
Yes.
Then it would have the effect of town meeting approving every budget as amended by the previous motion, except Department 421. So those would be locked in.
In one sweeping motion, we're done.
If his motion passes.
Okay.
It would be done on everything except 421.
Yeah.
Subject to reconsideration at the end of the meeting, but they'd be locked in for the purposes of debate on this article.
Thank you.
Okay, any other technical questions? Mr. Fox, please rise, state your name and precinct number, please.
Juan Fox, precinct one. A question to moderator, maybe by a show of hands?
No, we're not gonna do show of hands. What's your question, though?
The question was, is how many people are holding on, want to make holds? The knowledge of how many people are gonna want to make holds?
I gotta rule your question out of order. It's not appropriate at this time. We're discussing Mr. Holmes' motion.
Okay.
Okay, I understand what you're trying to get, but, you know, you're cutting to the chase here, and we just can't do it that way. All right, any other technical questions? I see none. We're gonna move on to, you have a debate question, debate, oh, I'm sorry, Pat Colburn, go ahead. Do you have a question?
Hi, Pat Colburn, precinct four. Just a quick statement. I'm not about to vote 120 million, I'm sorry, 112 million without any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Walsh, please state, please rise, state your name and precinct number. So we are on debate section. Pro and con debate, commentary, statements. Go ahead, Cynthia.
Cynthia Walsh, precinct three. I don't know how we can look our neighbors in the eye if we vote a $112 million budget based on the opinion of 10 people. Granted, there are, we're on the Finance Committee. But 10 out of a little less than 30,000 residents are gonna decide how we spend $112 million? Much of it taxpayer money? Luckily, my neighbors have dementia and they're in a nursing home, so I don't have to explain this to them. But the rest of you have human beings who are thoughtful and can understand what is doing. Very few people drag themselves to the polls to vote for most of us. And this is how we're gonna thank those folks? I'm voting no.
All right, Eric Coleman? Please rise, state your name and precinct number. And this is pro and con debate.
Eric Coleman, precinct five. I had some more to say, but I think it's pretty much this. The function of the Finance Committee at this town is to advise town meeting and not to make our decisions. We have a decision, we have to discuss the budget, decide what we want to do, and vote on it. This is our responsibility. Thank you.
All right, I saw Mr. Cone first. Mr. Cone, please rise, state your name and precinct number. This is pro and con debate, commentary. This is pro and con debate, commentary.
My name is Robert Cohen, precinct five. We stood here a week ago and took an oath. And we said we would do the best for the town, would we do this? I've been here, the same as a lot of other people, many, many years. And this is the first time that I could know of that we're just gonna bypass a budget and do this. Our responsibility as town meeting members and representing the community is to do our job. As Bill Che- as Bill Belichick said, do your job. And it's up to us to do our job and go over this budget. The finance committee does a good job, the selectmen prepare it, goes to the finance committee, and we have the final say. Let's not take that away from us. Thank you.
Alright, anybody else? Alright, don't- Please rise, state your name and precinct number please.
Neo Valle, precinct five. Uh, just like the ones before me, I agree that it'd be an injustice if we just decided just to move on. We have to hear everything out, we have to make the right decision for ourselves, for our neighbors, for our kids. So I would vote no, as of now, yeah.
Alright, thank you for your comments. Uh, Sandra Souza? Please state your name and precinct number please.
Sandra Souz- Sandra Souza, precinct one. I agree with the other speakers, but I just want to face all of you and say that we do have an obligation to the town, that's why we're elected, that's why we're here. It is our fiduciary responsibility to sit here tonight and listen to this. And it is an arduous task. Sometimes we complain about it. I do trust the select board. I do trust the finance committee. But Mr. Cohen's right, we are the final, the final step in this process. And this is what makes town meeting what it is. It's our responsibility to do this. So I will not, I will not be voting for this. I'm not sure why, uh, this motion was brought forward, because I've never seen it. But I think that this is our, our biggest obligation, it's, it's the most important thing we do for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? I don't see any other hands. Oh, Mr. Gino? If you want to use the microphone at the end of the table, feel free, it's up to you sir. Please, uh, when you get to the microphone, please state your name and precinct number please.
Thanks Brian. I really appreciate the form of government we have, and I must confess that. And I also understand the desire to sort of move the process along. I really do. But I've seen different, different ideas, uh, sway town meeting body to willingly choose a a path that they didn't expect to choose when they started. Just because people said something that really made a lot of sense. So I'd make two quick observations. I think it'd be a shame to think that our government was in too much of a hurry to be answerable to, and take suggestions from those that they receive sustenance from. They get the money from the people in the town. We need to be thoughtful about making sure that the people who pay for the services actually have a chance to ask questions about what is going on. It happens once a year. That deals with the people who are elected to town mi- meeting. Chapter seven, section ten of our charter says that even people who are not town meeting representatives have the opportunity to speak at town meeting. That means anyone, the thirty thousand people who live here have a chance to ask questions about where their money goes. I agree with an earlier speaker who said, ten people shouldn't decide that. I hope we don't decide that ten people should decide it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gino, anybody else? Jim Curtin, please state your name and precinct number please.
Jim Curtin, precinct four. I applaud, applaud my friend here from precinct three on what he's trying to do. He's trying to streamline this. This budget is a process that starts way back in October. It's vetted by department heads, it goes to the town manager, it goes to the, the select board. The school department goes to the school committee and the superintendent of the schools. Then we vet it down to the ten members of the finance committee. Through all of this, there are public hearings, if people have questions on things, they can stand up and they can ask them. Now, I hope that we're not gonna spend three hours going through this budget with all these supposed great questions that everybody's gonna have just to come up with the same issue that we'd have if we just went with Mr. Holmes' uh, request. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bannister, do I see you-
Peter Bannister, precinct two. Uh, I, I think that the town meeting, the representative town meeting that we've had for all these years has been long sometimes, but people can speak their piece. One of the previous speakers mentioned about the finance committee, I looked through the book, I looked what the finance committee thought on their meetings. You try to go with that and use that. One of the things that we know in life, perception is everything. There's been a discussion, I'm not on social media, because I've seen it ruin too many kids in schools and too many adults. And I'm sure a lot of people here agree with me. But the discussion of town meeting being changed to a city council type government is, is my perception of what's happening. So I encourage everyone to vote no, thank you.
Alright, is there anybody else? Going once, going twice, okay, we're gonna do a summary, oh, Mr. Mr. Juan Fox, please state your name and precinct number please.
Juan, Juan Fox, precinct one. I understand where, uh, Mr. Holmes is going with it, uh, this is a very long part of the process. And if there's any way to speed it up is, uh, would be good. And if, if nobody in the audience had a hold on anything other than DPW, then I'd probably be on board with that. But if there's one person out here who has a hold, then we can't go this way because you're preventing them from having information given to them. So because of that, uh, and I, I'm assuming that somebody out there has a hold, I have to say no on this.
Oh, thank you, alright. Mr. Phillips, please rise, state your name and precinct number please.
Stephen Phillips, precinct one. There are twenty-nine, there's two thousand nine hundred and twenty days or hours in a year. We're complaining about three, four hours. The town needs a voice. I understand, and I agree with the previous speaker, that it's sometimes arduous, but it's necessary, it's part of the process. Anything of value has checks and balances. This is part of that process. You are the elected members in that checks and balance process. I will be voting no. Thank you.
Carolyn Campbell, go ahead, name and precinct number.
Hi, Carolyn Campbell, precinct four, I'd like to move the previous question.
Uh, did you want to- Point of personal privilege by, uh, select board member Scott Carrara, did you want to get up and say something Scott? I understand that Carolyn, but let me have the, uh, person from the select board speak.
Point of order?
Who's, uh, raising the point of order?
Jim Curtin, precinct four.
Yes, Mr.-
Not open for debate. She's called to move the question, it's been seconded. It's not open for debate.
The moderator decides what's open for debate, sir.
Excuse me?
The moderator decides.
It doesn't go by the rules of order?
I, I didn't recognize her-
Could I ask, could I ask you sir to please go through t- town council? Because I believe that's part of the rules of order.
Well, let me check with town council, thank you sir.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, through you to the speaker, your judgment as to whether or not to allow debate supersedes whatever's written in town meeting. I can recite town meeting if you wish, however, it's your judgment that's gonna control the question.
Thank you, Mr. Town Council, to save time, I don't want him to recite everything, all the laws and everything, but the moderator does have the final say. So after Mr. Carrara speaks, I will ask Ms. Carolyn Campbell to rise again. Mr. Scott Carrara, please.
Thank you, Scott Carrara, selectman, also precinct two-
Can't hear you too well, okay.
Selectman and precinct two member, through you, Mr. Moderator, and Mr. Curt- Mr. Curtin, I asked him if I could speak. I was gonna use one of the mics down there, that's what took me a few seconds to get up here. It wasn't that I'm superseding anybody or cutting anybody off-
Mr. Carrara, all due respect, no cross debate, the moderator has to-
There's no cross debate, I'm just helping him understand things.
I appreciate it, but the moderator has the final say, thank you.
I agree with the gentleman over there who just spoke last. I've been here since nineteen eighty-eight in town meeting, I've seen a lot of things. I'm sure Bob Cohen can say it too. Things come up, things go down. We are here to protect the residents of the town of Stoughton, I served nine years on the, the finance committee. When you sit on that board over there, your eyes get this big and wide. You really start to understand finances of what's going on in the town. It's easy to read that book, get it two weeks prior to this, and try to make heads of tails out of it. It's a lot of time and effort that go into vetting it. Not only does the, the finance committee have statutory regulations they have to follow, they have the town bylaws too. It's a pretty important board. I hold no ill will to Mr. Holmes or anybody else who wants to streamline it. If you want to streamline things and you think it's taking too much of your time, then why did you run? This was a whole year where everybody had a redistrict and everything went crazy. People were fighting to get on different precincts. There's a different breed that's out there, people, they want to be involved, they want to see what their kids are doing, they want to see what else is happening, why things are what. I don't have a problem with it. I don't want to become city government where eleven people are gonna tell everybody in town. You think that's gonna be fair? You think you're gonna be able to get up and cry and have your voice? It won't. You think it's working in Randolph, they're not happy with it, believe me. I've talked to people over there, they're not happy with it. Ask Bararkton. City council's listened to nobody. It's a power trip over there. These are your neighbors. They want to be heard, they feel they did something important to get involved. Please, don't, don't cut off people's hands, their voice. Thank you.
Mr. Coleman, point of information, please rise, state your point.
We haven't finished with Mr. Holmes yet, he has to give his-
Well, I, I understand that.
I understand, someone just moved the question.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, we have to take a moment here, only one person can hear through the microphone, you know, the audience can't hear two or three speakers at the same time, so allowed you to rise, state your case, but I was gonna first ask Ms. Carolyn Campbell to repeat your motion-
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Carolyn Campbell, precinct four, I'd like to move the previous question.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Cut off debate. Mr. Coleman, do you have a point of order? Oh, you're seconding, I'm sorry, Mr. Coleman seconds Carolyn Campbell's motion. Alright, before we move the cut off debate, I'm gonna let Mr. Holmes summarize, then we'll take the vote. Quickly, sir.
Thank you. Um, I want to take the, um, a moment to summarize the, the idea behind this again, this is a rational move towards efficiency for this town. Um, the process for budgeting in the one hundred and twelve, three hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars uh, that runs this town is a very open, public, and transparent process. The process, for anybody who's new to this, the process begins sometimes in September, sometimes in October, with the town manager and the town manager's budget team. At some point around December, the town manager hands the budget off to the board of, the select board. Um, this year, I think the select board handed the budget off to the finance committee in the, you know, by charter, it has to be there by the third week of February. Uh, typically, the finance committee has the authority to assign a subcommittee to each and every individual department. That is also subject to the open meeting laws when, um, subcommittees go meet with members of, of departments to talk about their individual budgets. Um, the subcommittees report back to the finance committee. The finance committee holds public hearings for each individual budget, culminating in a final public meeting where it's their either approval or their rejection of each individual department's budget. The ability to access the information and have the ability to decide on it takes place weeks and weeks before we arrive here at town meeting. Uh, what you see in front of you is a budget that is less than the statutory two and a half percent maximum increase. This is a balanced budget. Um, I have to credit the select board, I have to credit the finance committee, the town manager, and the town manager's budget team for producing what they have all produced at this point in time. It's unprecedented. In the years that I have been a town meeting representative, it is unprecedented for a budget to receive a favorable recommendation from the finance committee to come to town meeting and not be approved. I think it happened once in like maybe two thousand and two, the budget was amended. Um, it's, it's unprecedented. In addition to this, it's, it's a very public and transparent process, as I've mentioned. You have precinct representatives from each of your precincts that you caucus into the finance committee. They're all doing volunteer work, they're all doing it because they're as dedicated as everybody else in this room. I, I don't know when, if, we are all ever gonna trust the process, but I think it's time to stop putting more trust in the process, and that's why I'm making the motion I'm making tonight. Um, I want to thank the, the people that, that put this budget together. Uh, I know that there's opposition to this, because I believe that Stoughton has no middle on anything. You're either strongly opposed or strongly, uh, strongly in favor of something, and there is no middle. Uh, but I'm thanking the people that put this budget together tonight, and I hope that you do by pressing number one on, uh, your clickers when you get to vote on the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Alright, now back to the motion, the cut off debate. Uh, it has to pass by two-thirds. I'm gonna ask for a voice vote. If, if it's not unanimous, I will have to, uh, put it up on the screen here for a vote. So we need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of cutting off debate, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none. Uh, debate is cut off, and we're gonna go to the clickers to vote on this motion. This is Brian Holmes' motion, yes, you ready to go? Alright, it's appearing on the screen, please hold your clickers and click, and vote accordingly please. Alright, the motion fails, thirty-one yes, eighty-four no, one abstention. Now we revert back to the main motion as amended. Alright? Well, no, we're gonna go back to the main budget. Right, which means, uh, Bill Rose is gonna now read the budget, one department at a time, reflecting the adjusted numbers if we can. Uh, John, I would ask that, you help him if you, you know, the department numbers, I, I believe he made the adjustments already. Did you? Okay, so the way it's gonna work for the new members, um, Bill, what page are you gonna start on?
Uh, it's page thirty-three, Mr. Moderator, Department one-eleven, town council.
So if you turn to page thirty-three, did you say?
Yes.
Okay. And let me just explain to the new members. This is page thirty-three in your orange books. If you look under account description, you're gonna see the, the town council, Department one-one-one, or one-eleven. He's gonna read that, and then he's gonna tell you what the, the final number, or the bottom number is on that, and you look down where it says town council totals. And Bill, you're gonna read the finance committee numbers? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, he's gonna read the column on the bottom there for the finance committee. So let's just take the first one, Bill, go ahead.
Page thirty-three, Department one-eleven, town council, two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars.
Everybody see that? Okay, when, I just want to, for those new members, when you get to bigger department budgets, you'll see a line for expenses, you're still gonna go down to the bottom where it says totals. Then he'll read that. You can't hear that? I'm sorry, what is that? I can't hear you. Okay, what I'm saying is, can Bill, okay, Bill, one more time, can you repeat that numbers loud?
Uh, Town Council, two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars.
Always look in the Finance Committee column.
Very last column. Well, not the very last, but.
No, it's, it's, yeah, it says FY twenty-two-three. Correct. So that's how it's going to be for each department, all right? When the departments get a little larger, we'll go slower. And let me also say, if you want to come back, if you want to discuss this department, for whatever reason, you have to yell out "hold," okay? We're going to ask you your last name so we can write it down. And then after we get done with all these departments, we're going to come back and we can discuss that department that you held. All the other departments that don't get held, they're considered closed. Okay, we're not going to debate those at all. All right, Eric Coleman, did you have a question? Okay, state your name, precinct number, and your purpose.
Eric Coleman, Precinct Five, two questions on the process of, of the budget. Um, one is, um, can, uh, okay, w- once a budget is passed for a department, we've got two sections. One is the salary, one is the other expenses. May a department head move non-salary, I'm sorry, move non-salary spending within that department freely without asking for the Finance Committee? So in other words, let's say we've got, uh, five thousand dollars for copying expenses.
Okay, I might ask Dr. Grimm. I believe she knows what your question is.
Yeah, any, there can be transfers throughout the year within any department line item. We just cannot transfer between departments. So we can do intra but not inter.
Okay, and if I may, a second question, uh, and it's regarding the process that we're going through now. Uh, can a department's budget towards the end of the budget motion be added to by taking money from those previously approved department budgets are those that were not on hold? And if so, what is the procedure to do that? Do you need examples on that?
You're saying, can we move money from one department that was not held? Or only if departments were held? That's what it comes down to.
Now, i- if, let's say, for example, the school department, we want to put more money into the school department. And you'll say, well, where are you going to get that money from? Then we have to look back to the previous article, previous, uh, budgets. Departments, thank you. And, uh, we, we have to see, can we go to any of them?
You need a source to, you need a source to.
A source, right. But some of them were, were not on hold. Can we go to those? Do we have to reconsider what's the proper process to do that?
I believe once it's closed, it's closed. We move on.
So let's, again, if, if, I'm, I'm not saying that the, uh, school department.
Do you have, Mr. Coleman, do you have a, are you going to be moving money from one department to another?
Yes.
Or is this just a question?
Let's say you want to fund the school department more, where can you look for it? Town Manager, if, if through you, Town Manager, please.
If I could remind you, there's about fifty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars that's not being taxed. So there's actually, I, I don't want to call it a surplus. It won't be because we're not taxing for it. We are not taxing for a full two-point-five percent. If you wanted to tax to a full two-point-five percent, you would end up with fifty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars extra if that's a source you wanted to use. It's just not what I had put forward and what the Board had moved forward and what FinCom had voted with.
So through you to the Town Manager, that means that if we want to move something, uh, from the, on the budget, we, we, we have to take it from, uh, from the, uh, raise the tax.
I, I, no, no, I'm, I'm not telling you where you can or can't take it. I'm just pointing out that there is fifty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars of untaxed, if you will, money that if you wanted to put fifty-two thousand, nine hundred somewhere and put that back onto the tax rate, then you could. I'm just telling you, that's one source of money, but I cannot tell you where you would want to pull or not pull out of other departments.
That's one option, but we can't take it from the budget from other.
This is what I think we need to do, to make it easy and simple for all of us to follow, including the moderator. We, I have to try to follow this too. If you do not put a hold on the department, then that department is closed. You just can't go back to it. I think that's, okay.
Mr. Moderator?
Who's asking?
Carolyn Campbell, Precinct Four. Um, in that case, like, if somebody wanted to make the motion that Mr. the previous speaker was discussing, could they make a motion at that point of time to suspend the rules, then to reopen the budget?
We can always just try to suspend the rules.
Okay, thank you, and?
Correct with that, right? Yeah, always, as long as it gets two-thirds, we can change things as we go. It just will get messy, but we could do that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, is there a free cash number?
Do we have a free cash number? A good question, Carolyn. Do we have that free cash number if one's available?
So, um, so the, at the start of the meeting, it was, um, uh, well, the, the amount certified by the DOR is five million, six sixty-six, one fifty-eight. Five million, six sixty-six, one fifty-eight. And at the December special meeting, we used three hundred thousand. So the amount available is five million, three sixty-six, one fifty-eight.
Everybody got that? Five million, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Available free cash. All right, that make sense, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, that's correct.
So if people want to increase a budget, they could take most money from free cash as well?
Um, subject to the Town Meeting.
Oh, I know, but they could propose that as a funding source.
Do we have any, uh?
How much has been allocated in the bud, like, for expenses in the warrant?
Any of that encumbered, Bill, already?
Okay, we, uh, yeah, good question, Mr. Moderator. If a person decided to take money from free cash, they'd also have to make a substitute motion from one of the other articles because all of that money has been allocated to articles, so. So one of the other articles would need to be amended.
So all five million dollars have been, has been allocated to spend on articles? So at that point, if they wanted to take that, they, when we got to the article, we would have to find another source of funding?
Yeah, well, you would have to, if you were going to take it from free cash, you would have to reduce one of the other articles.
Well, we can't reduce one of the other articles that hasn't come up yet.
Right.
So we would have to, when that article came after the budget, find another source to fund that article.
That's correct.
Thank you.
You are correct, Carolyn. Thank you. All right, any other questions? It's good information for everybody. All right, uh, Bill, could you repeat on page thirty-three just one more time, then we'll get moving?
Page thirty-three, Department one-eleven, Town Council, two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars.
I'm going to pause for about ten seconds. If I don't hear a hold, we're moving on. All right, go ahead, Bill.
Page thirty-four, Department one-fourteen, Moderator, six thousand dollars.
Okay, Bill.
Page thirty-five, Department one-twenty-two, Select Board, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Hold. Okay. State your name and precinct number, just so we have it for the record. Thank you, Pat. Are we writing that down? One second, Bill. So there's a hold on Department one-twenty-two, Select Board, which is on page thirty-five. Pat Colburn, Precinct Five. All right, Bill, go ahead.
Page thirty-six, Department one-twenty-three, Town Manager, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Eric Coleman, Precinct Five. One second. Okay, Bill.
Page thirty-seven, Department one-thirty-one, Finance Committee, as amended, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. Four thirty, four thirty-two, three fifty-three. As amended.
As amended, okay. Yeah, please say that, Bill, as amended, so we all follow it. All right, we're going, hearing no hold, we're moving on.
Uh, page thirty-eight, Department one-thirty-five, Town Accountant, three thirty, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars.
You putting a hold on that one? George Stolinski, Precinct Two, and that is Department one-thirty-six.
One-thirty-five.
I'm sorry, one-three-five, one-three-five. Page thirty-eight. All right, Bill, go ahead, please.
Page thirty-nine, Department one-thirty-six, Auditing and Analytics, ninety-three thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars.
All right, let's move on.
Page forty, Department one-thirty-eight, Centralized Purchasing, one hundred and eight thousand, one hundred dollars.
All right, let's move on.
Page forty-one, Department one-forty-one, Board of Assessors, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars.
All right, let's move on.
Page forty-two, Department one-forty-five, Treasurer Collector, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
All right, let's move on.
Page forty-three, Department one-fifty-two, Human Resources, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Are we moving about the right speed for everybody? Everybody okay with that? Okay, if we do move fast, just, uh, more than happy to slow down. All right, let's move on.
Page forty-four, Department one-fifty-three, Procurement, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Hold by George Stolinski, Precinct Two. All right, let's move on.
Page forty-five, Department one-fifty-five, Information Systems, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Okay, let's move on.
Uh, page forty-six, Department one-sixty-one, Town Clerk, three hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Okay, let's move on.
Page forty-seven, Department one-seventy-five, Planning Board, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Is that George? Okay, George Stolinski, hold on Department one-seventy-five. Okay, let's move on.
Uh, page forty-eight, Department one-seventy-six, Economic Development, one hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Okay, let's move on.
Pages forty-nine and fifty, Department two-ten, Police, seven million, seven thirty-four, three hundred and one dollars. Seven-seven-three-four-three-oh-one.
Pat Colburn, Precinct Four. Just one minute. Okay, please, let's move on.
Page fifty-one, Department two-thirteen, Crossing Guards, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Okay, let's move on.
Page fifty-two, Department two-seventeen, Civilian Dispatches, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Okay, let's move on.
Pages fifty-three and fifty-four, Department two-twenty, Fire, seven million, one sixty-five, and seventy-eight dollars. Seven-one-six-five-zero-seven-eight.
Pat Colburn, by department. That is Department two-twenty. Just a second, please. Okay, let's move on.
Page fifty-five, Department two-forty-one, Building and Zoning, four hundred thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Okay, let's move on.
Page fifty-six, Department two-ninety-two, Animal Control, sixty-eight thousand, twenty-three dollars.
All right, let's move on.
Page fifty-seven, Department three-oh-one, Regional Schools, one million, four hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars.
All right, we have a hold for Educational Regional School, Department three-oh-one, page fifty-seven. Okay, one minute, please. Just a second, Bill, I just. All right, let's move on.
Page fifty-eight, Department number four-eleven, Development Services slash Engineering, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars.
George Stolinski, we have a hold for Engineering Department four-eleven, page fifty-eight. Just a minute, Bill. All right, let's move on.
Pages fifty-nine and sixty, Department four-twenty-one, DPW General and Highway Administration, as amended, one million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, thirty-two dollars. As amended, one-one-eight-seven-zero-three-two.
Okay, let's move on.
Page sixty-one, Department four-twenty-two, DPW Highway Construction and Maintenance, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred dollars.
I hear two holds or just one? I hear another one. Who is it? Pat Colburn and who else? Oh, Steve Phillips. I'm sorry, I didn't hear a hold. Okay, just a minute, Bill. That was Department four-twenty-two? Is he one? All right, Bill, go ahead.
Page sixty-two, Department one-fifty-nine, Facilities, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Okay, let's move on.
Page sixty-three, Department four-twenty-three, Snow Removal, four hundred thousand dollars.
All right, let's move on.
Page sixty-four, Department four-twenty-four, Street Lighting, two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Pat Colburn on the street lighting, we have a hold. Just a second, Bill. Okay, everybody up with that so far? Okay, let's move on.
Page sixty-five, Department four-twenty-six, Fleet Maintenance, six hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay, let's move on.
Page sixty-six, Department four-thirty-three, Waste, Waste Disposal and Sanitation, as amended, two million, one hundred and twenty-three. Page sixty-six, Department four-thirty-three, Waste of- Waste Disposal and Sanitation, as amended, two million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars, two million, one twenty-three, six fifty-six, six five six.
Okay, let's move on.
Page sixty-seven, Department five-oh-five, Human Services, twelve thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars.
Carolyn Campbell, Precinct four, just one minute, Bill. Okay, let's move on.
Page sixty-eight, Department five-ten, Board of Health, one hundred and eighty-five thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
George Stolinski, okay, we have a hold, Board of Health, Department five-ten. Just a minute, Bill. Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Uh, page sixty-nine, Department five-forty-one, Council on Aging, four hundred and six thousand seventy-three dollars.
Okay, let's move on.
Page seventy, Department five-forty-three, Veteran Services, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars.
All right, let's move on.
Page seventy-one, Department five-forty-four, Substance Abuse and Prevention, one hundred and s- one hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Okay, let's move on.
Page seventy-two, Department six-ten, Library, one million, ninety-seven thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
Did I hear a hold? What's your first name? I'm sorry? Gray. Two Gs. What precinct number? Thank you, just a minute, Bill. And that was Library? Thank you, just a minute. All right, let's move on.
Page seventy-three, Department six-fifteen, Historical Commission, eight hundred dollars.
Okay, let's move on.
Page seventy-four, Department six-thirty, Recreation and Youth Services, four hundred and fifty thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Did I hear a hold? Carolyn Campbell, okay, Bill, just a minute. Okay, let's move on.
Uh, page seventy-five, Department six-fifty, Parks, as amended, three hundred and seventy thousand thirty-two dollars, three seven zero zero three two.
Did I hear a hold? Matt Callis, Precinct three, okay, hold on a second, Bill. Okay, Bill, go ahead, please.
Page seventy-six, Department six-ninety-five, Community Events, eighty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars.
George Stolinski, Precinct two, Community Events. Just a second, Bill. All right, let's move on.
Page seventy-seven, Department seven-ten, Retirement of Debt, eight million, six hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars.
Okay, let's move on.
Page seventy-eight, Department nine-oh-nine, Health Insurance, ten million, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Who held that? Uh, Lou Judo, uh, hold on Health Insurance, Department nine-oh-nine. Just a second, Bill. Okay, go ahead, please.
Page seventy-nine, Department nine-ten, Townwide Insurance, one million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, let's move on.
Page eighty, Department nine-eleven, Retirement Contribution, seven million, one ninety-two, thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Okay, let's move on.
Page eighty-one, Department nine-thirteen, Unemployment Compensation, fifty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, let's move on.
Page ninety, Department number three-hundred.
Wait a minute, we jumped something.
Page ninety.
Are we going to ninety? We're on eighty-two, Sewa, do we, don't we do that one?
Yeah, we skipped that one. The enterprise of my, it's, we could read them as they go on, they've already been voted, so I don't know if you wanna...
I'm sorry, Bill, you have to ex-
The enterprise has already been voted.
Okay, we voted the enterprise, Article eight-nine?
Yeah.
We're done, right? Okay, so they're all locked in. Okay, so just for clarifying, uh, everybody, um, I need to remind you too, we did vote the enterprise funds earlier in the, in the book. This is just a detail, uh, write-up of them, so, Bill, can you just-
This is the, uh, these are the general, Article thirteen relates to the general fund budgets, which includes, um, excludes the enterprise, so...
Okay, so what page are we gonna be on, Bill?
Page ninety.
Ninety, please turn to page ninety in your books. Do we have any questions on what we're doing? Well, well, okay, Juan, please rise, state your question, so everybody can hear, and we'll try to explain it.
Juan Fox, Precinct one, uh, it looks like we jumped over nine forty on page-
Your mics, your microphone has to be turned on.
Juan Fox, Precinct one.
Thank you.
It looks like, uh, we may have jumped over Department nine forty on page eighty-one.
The speaker's correct, Mr. Moderator, uh, Department, page eighty-one, Department nine forty, Other Financing Uses, zero.
Hang on one second, Bill. Page eighty-one. Thank you, Mr. Fox, for pointing that out. Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Page eighty-one, Department nine forty, Other Financing Uses, zero.
Everybody got that? Yes, on the bottom of the page. Okay, thank you, Mr. Fox, for pointing that out. All right, now where are we, Bill?
Okay, page ninety?
Yep. Go ahead, Sean.
Uh, Department three-hundred, Stoughton Public Schools, fifty-two million, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars, fifty-two, one ninety-nine, seven seven two.
We have a hold by Mr. Coleman? Okay. One minute, Bill. Precinct... Just a second, please. All right, Bill, are we all set? We all done?
For a grand, for a grand total of a hundred and twelve million, three hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. For the general fund.
Can we have that number one more time, please? Hang on a second, uh-
One twelve, three oh seven, seven ninety-two.
Seven ninety-two, thank you, Bill. Pat Colburn?
Did we miss the cable access on page eighty-nine, or did I miss it? Was, was that, was that an enterprise I missed? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Mr. Vanas? Uh, we went by it already. I'm sorry, we asked him for a hold even though we went by the department. Yeah, we both, it's already been passed, sorry, Peter. Okay, otherwise I'd have to open it up for everybody else. So, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, at this point, we went through the budget. Does everybody wanna take a ten-minute break now, or we wanna continue? All right, please look, note the time, does anybody have a clock? Please back it, it's about eight-fifty? Eight-fifty, four, nine oh five, we'll blink the lights twice and we'll start. Thank you. All right, we're gonna start right now. Okay, a quick summary, we had nineteen holds. I know some people have mentioned to me already they're gonna withdraw their holds, so when we get to that person, if they're still here, just make a, um, rise to the microphone, just let us know you were drawing, and then that will close that department, unless somebody else did a hold on the... Um, sorry, Mr. Vanas, I have to rule you out of order. All right, I understand, okay, so we have nineteen holds. All right, Bill, the first one is, I have as Department one-twenty-two, page thirty-five, and that's the Select Board, and that was, Miss, uh, that was Pat Colburn, Tom Rep from Precinct four. Is that the first one, I believe? Page thirty-five. Before you stop, Pat, I just wanna have an agreement, we're on the same, uh... I'm sorry, what is that? No, nothing on the moderator's budget. First one was page thirty-five, Department one-twenty-two, Select Board's Budget. Everybody agree with me? I just want con- confirmation, confirmation? All right. Pat Colburn, Precinct four, please, go ahead.
There we go. Pat Colburn, Precinct four, and just to clarify, if a department's been put on hold, anyone can speak, correct? Not just the person who held it?
That's correct.
Okay.
Unless that person who held it withdraws it.
Okay.
Then it's closed. All the other departments that have not been held are now closed.
Okay, thank you. My question for the Select Board is in relation to the consultant fees line item, um, that was three thousand, is now one thousand, would that be used for search committees? Or if we hired, say, a consultation firm, I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Grimm, but in the case of you leaving, and thank you for all you've done, um, if we needed a search consultant, would it come out of that line item?
It, it, it likely could have, yes.
So would this one thousand dollars be enough in, in light of Dr. Grimm's resignation?
There's that thousand, there's, um, a little bit in consulting also in the town manager budget, uh, I think combined with a couple of different departments that the town probably could, obviously, we put this budget together, I had no, um, notion that I would be leaving, uh, so I really wasn't thinking about it, what a search committee would cost. I do think that through enough different departments, it could be put together, but it probably would require some type of a transfer, uh, if it comes out of the Select Board budget.
And you're not able to transfer from another department, correct, until the last three months of the year?
Yeah, it, or, or through a request to FinCom during the year, so they could go to FinCom during the year and make a request to transfer, so, um, but it actually, to be honest with you, and I can't speak from the pace that the board is gonna work at in hiring someone and when those bills would come in, but it likely may even happen, some of it in this fiscal year too. But I, I don't know, I obviously can't speak for the board on that, and I'm not sure if they are ready to answer that either, but there would be some that might happen in this fiscal year, and they could during the year next year, in let's say August, go to FinCom and say, we wanna transfer a couple thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, if I could just follow up on, on the process, let's for example, say, when we got to the town manager budget, we decided we didn't need that full salary, and someone wanted to move that money to cover the search fee, how would that work? I mean, because, like, we haven't done the depart- the town manager's budget yet, so would we keep this open, or would we have to open the town manager budget?
Uh, I don't believe we moved money like that in the past, correct?
Well, if we moved money from one department to another, as, um, Eric mentioned earlier...
We use, they usually do a transfer, isn't that, isn't that correct?
No, what I'm saying, let's say I wanted to reduce the town manager's salary, if it was determined we didn't need the whole thing for the new person, and instead we wanted to put someone into the search for the new town manager...
It, it would, it would really probably be more logical to do the transfer with FinCom, because you have to realize, this is one that you happen to know of, a situation we happen to know of, but I can tell you that on a day-to-day basis, there are unanticipated things that happen, or areas we don't need money, and we do move it at the end, we go to FinCom, or in the last three months, we transfer. So this does happen, and in the scheme of the budget, you'd be talking about a relatively small amount of money, you're not talking tens of thousands, so it probably would be prudent, and I, and I would caution you, along looking on a town manager's salary line item, because that may be a question that comes up, um, my comparables to other communities of what I make now is actually relatively low, so I would caution lowering that salary too much, uh, you might not draw, so you might undermine your own search.
Thank you, that saves me a question on that budget, thank you.
I figured you might, okay.
Okay, thank you, Pat Colburn, anybody else on Select Board's Budget, Department one-twenty-two? George Stolinski, please state your name and precinct number and your question or comment. Can I also ask everybody, when you turn the microphone on, just leave it on?
It's on now. Okay.
Thank you.
On the, uh, uh, George Stolinski, Precinct two, on the, uh, expense line, for the dues and subscriptions, we've gone from thirty-nine hundred and eighty dollars of prior, previous years, to six thousand one hundred and ten dollars, which is a fifty-three point five-two percent increase, can somebody explain why we have to have so much in dues and subscriptions?
Sure, uh, you'll notice in the town manager's budget, it went down that much, it's because in the past, for whatever reason, the dues and subscriptions for the board had been in the town manager's budget, so there's no net increase or decrease, it's just a, a proper accounting of where it comes out of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stolinski, thank you, Dr. Grimm, anybody else? Eric Coleman, please rise, state your name and precinct number and your questions.
Eric Coleman, Precinct five, in the past, when there's been changes like this, there's been notes on the bottom saying why the items have gone up or down, it would be helpful in the future if we had those notes, so that we wouldn't have these questions, that is all, thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? Okay, once we move on, that closes the budget for this department. Hearing none, we're gonna move on. All right, that wraps up Department one-twenty-two, closed. All right, now we're on to Department one-twenty-three, page thirty-six, Town Manager, that was Eric Coleman. Please rise and state your name and precinct number and your question.
Eric Coleman, Precinct five, I was looking at the salary part, but from what I heard, uh, tonight, I, I don't question it, I, I think we might, uh, it seems like we might need the full salary for the new position. If there's anybody else that wants to speak, that's-
Uh, are you closing it? Are you withdrawing?
Yes, I'm withdrawing my hold, if somebody else has something else to say, then, uh, there-
Well, you can't pass your hold on to somebody else, if you're withdrawing-
No, before I release-
If you wanna ask a question, then it stays open.
All right, then, that's it.
What are you doing?
Releasing the hold.
Okay, the hold is now released, that department is closed. Okay, next up, we have Department one-thirty-five on page thirty-eight. If I'm missing anything, please stop me. Page thirty-eight, Department one-thirty-five, page thirty-eight, and it's called- Page thirty-eight, and it's called Town Accountant, Department one thirty-five. And that's George Stolinski, Precinct Two. You had the hold on that. Please state your name and precinct number and your questions.
I couldn't afford it. Uh, George Stolinski, Precinct Two. The question, uh, is backed in the consultant fees. We're going to a ten thousand dollar, uh, amount from seventy-five. Just why the increase?
Mr. Rowe can answer that? I believe that's a contractual clause.
Mr. Rowe?
We, we have a consultant on retainer. Uh, it's Clifton Larsonell, and they, they're a national accounting and advisory firm. Just for miscellaneous questions that might come up, um, they have a lot of expertise in munis, and, um, if somebody gets sick and we need extra help, we can call on them to, um, come in and fill in. They can send, send a clerk down with municipal experience, so...
So what you're saying, basically, the problem is with the munis system that we have questions on? I thought we had that thing...
No, no, no. No.
No, no, it's just general accounting help.
Just in that one area in your department?
Not, not just, not just munis, just, just general accounting help, uh, in general, so...
Yeah, it's not about the munis platform itself, it's more about the actual mass in accounting.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Stolinski. Anybody else on that department? Okay, seeing no one else. That department is now closed. The next one I have is Department one fifty-three, and that's on page forty-four. Page forty-four, excuse me. And that is Department one fifty-three, and that's procurement. And that was George Stolinski, Precinct Two. Page forty-four, please rise, state your name and precinct number, and then your question.
The, uh, George Stolinski, Precinct Two, pinning my neck again. Uh, advertising and freight expenses going from four thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars and change, a hundred and forty-three point seven percent increase for advertising and freight. Is there something legitimate for this?
Yes. Uh, and you will see this, there's also, I know a hold on the planning department, and I'm assuming it may be the same question. You will see dramatic increases in advertising across the board in any department that has an advertising line item, but particularly in procurement, where there's a lot of public advertising that has to happen, and the planning board, where a lot of public advertising has to happen. We lost our local, one of our local papers, which was very inexpensive and qualified as our open meetings advertising and our procurement advertising. We've lost that. As a result, where we have to go for advertising is far more expensive. So this is to comply with all open meetings laws and all procurement laws, and if we didn't do this, we were gonna be running in the red next year. I'm just complying with the law.
Which, uh, where are we doing most of the advertising? Isn't that shopper's guide? Is that where it is?
Yeah, we lost, we lost the shopper, and that's the problem. That was our inexpensive advertising. Excuse me, we lost the penny saver.
Oh, that I know.
Yeah, we lost the penny saver. So what happened was that was where we advertised very inexpensively, and we saved a load of money using the penny saver. Twelve dollars to advertise the penny saver, now it's several hundred each time.
Did we ever try working with or negotiating with them at all to give us a better rate?
I, I, I...
I think it's reasonable, because they've done things like that.
I mean, we could, but realistically, they're not gonna drop to twelve dollars. So we are... I mean, it's an unfortunate expense we're, we're incurring. I will be happy to talk to them if there's a better rate and try to negotiate an advertising rate for the town.
Well, if you're promising them something, that you're giving them the advertising.
I mean, they know they're gonna get a lot of work from us, but, but absolutely, this is, this is one we, we had to build in. It was really frustrating, actually, looking through the budget, at how much we have to add.
All right. And I'm just saying, negotiations are worth...
Absolutely.
Okay. Carolyn Campbell's back up there.
Hi, thank you. Carolyn Campbell, Precinct Four. I just have a quick question, then. Where are we doing the advertising for the procurement?
Suburban shopper.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me.
Please use the mic...
Come on, yeah.
Hold on, please use the microphone if you're gonna speak.
I think the shopper for... Mr. Scardino may want to answer as well, because it covers planning and procurement.
Hi, I'm Fran Brutini, I'm the procurement officer. We advertised, um, used to advertise in the Sun Journal, and it was per ad. It could be, you know, five paragraphs, and it was still twelve dollars.
Right.
Now we have to advertise in a local newspaper, and that would be Brockton Enterprise, Patriot Ledger, and that's per line.
Okay, so we're paying, we're at, our advertisements are in the Enterprise or the Ledger?
Yeah, it, yes.
Do you use one over the other?
Um, honestly, Patriot Ledger is just the normal one we've gone to. Um, we have a great contact, um, just our sales rep, so...
Okay, no, I'm just curious if anyone ever wanted to find the ads, where to look.
Patriot Ledger.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
You all set, Carolyn?
Yeah, I think Mr. Scardino's gonna just answer the other question.
Yeah, I want to embellish a little bit upon the procurement officer. Um, the planning board, the procurement office, and the zoning board are covered by state law. The definition and council, um, will, uh, back me up on this. The statute requires, when a legal publication to the general public is required, it must be in a newspaper of general circulation. And the suburban shopper does not qualify as a newspaper under the statute. So we, we cannot be using, um, any kind of advertising type of media for that purpose. So, uh, the fact that that's not available, we then, as the procurement officer indicated, have to go to the major regional newspapers, and the Patriot Ledger and the Brockton Enterprise are under common ownership. So there's no way to kind of, uh, work deals out there. So, um, uh, any of you that unfortunately have lost somebody, tried to put an obituary in the newspaper, found out that it's hundreds and hundreds of dollars. Because of the scarcity of these, uh, mainstream newspapers, they're now commanding very large prices for legal and, and illegal advertising. So that's a, uh, an expense that's only gonna increase over the years.
Thank you, sir. Carolyn?
Um, Mr. Moderator, may I just ask through you to the previous speaker, where does the planning board post its notices?
We use either the Brockton Enterprise or the Patriot Ledger, whichever we, um, find available for, uh, putting our, our ads in. We have, they have to be in there, um, twice over, uh, once, uh, twice before a public hearing, and so, um, that we have to publish twice. I can't ask, I can't answer for the procurement office with respect to their statutory advertising requirement, but, uh, the only silver lining in that cloud is, in the past, we've had some very sharp cutoffs, and if there's a change in the, um, timing of something, you can't turn on a dime with the, with the Sun, whereas you can because it's a daily, uh, those other two are daily newspapers. So that, that's the only silver lining, is that we can expedite the hearings because we don't have to wait to the next cycle because of sharp cutoffs in the publication of those periodicals.
Okay. Thank you. That's my question. I'm just, the comment I would ask, it would be nice if you just picked one of the papers so people would know where to look. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for that department, which is procurement? Sylvia Whiting, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Sylvia Whiting, is this on?
It's on.
Sylvia Whiting, Precinct Six. Uh, there doesn't seem to be any mention of how you're gonna handle, um, diversity recruitment, both as far as procurement and hiring. So there's no dollars in any of these budgets to do that. I'm looking at this budget, there is some tra... and also on training, there is some dollars for training. Are you looking at the issue of diversity training, or is it just, I don't know, what kind of training you'd be doing in the procurement department?
We, in, in my budget, I take, um, classes through the Inspector General's office, and they offer diversity training. So I absolutely take diversity training there. And for advertising, I work with, um, I forget the official name of it, the, um, diversity mass.gov in the diversity department, and we can advertise through there for free. So there's no cost to advertising through there.
I guess that would also apply to the positions that are opened, like the new positions that's gonna open for town manager and other positions that are opened in this town.
So there was not a hold on the HR budget, but there's a dramatic increase in advertising in HR? Part of it is for the advertising of the posting of positions, but part of that is also to include the initiatives that came out of re, remap on the Stoughton Diversity Committee, and that money is in the, is the HR budget, which didn't have a hold on it, but there is money, if you look at that advertising budget, specifically accounted for for that purpose.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? There's procurement, going once, going twice. Okay, we're closing that budget up. Thank you all. Did you, okay. Uh, next up is Department one seventy-five on page forty-seven, and that's Planning Board, Department one seventy-five on page forty-seven. George Stolinski, Precinct Two. Please rise, state your name, precinct number, and your questions.
Uh, George Stolinski, Precinct Two. Once again, uh, here again, we're going back to the advertising line for a two-hundred percent increase from a thousand dollars to three thousand, and I think the answer was given previously.
Yeah, I think it was asked and answered in the prior... Are you good with that? Just want to make sure you're happy.
Oh, I'm very happy.
Okay, glad you're happy. Okay. Anybody else? Anybody else for questions on that department? Okay. That department is now closed. Next one up I have is on page forty-nine, Department two-ten. That is the Police Department, and we have Pat Colburn, Precinct Four. Please state your name and precinct number, please.
Pat Colburn, Precinct Four, thank you. My questions are all relating to the FTEs, and I'll be asking the same of fire, in case they want to get ready. Um, I see that you have seventy in twenty-two, and you're down to sixty-eight point five. Can you explain that difference? On the subtotal of FTEs?
Chief McNamara, would you like to explain that?
We're continuously always hiring, so we have people in the academy right now, and I'm in the process of pulling more civil service list to hire. So it's the same amount of patrol officers, fifty-four FTEs, nine sergeants, three lieutenants, a deputy chief, and a chief. Same overall number. We haven't added any positions in this budget for this year.
Okay, are there any partially funded positions in this budget?
Nope. If we have everybody hired, there won't be any partially funded positions.
Are there any open positions? So again, of the seventy for...
Yes, we're currently in the process of pulling the civil service list to hire.
How many?
We just had a retirement and a resignation, and we had two open positions, so we're hiring four.
Four open. And the last one, um, on this line is, are there any on leave for any reason? I'm just trying to get to how many people are actually working in the department out of the total.
Yes, we have people on leave.
Do you have any, a number on that?
Three.
Three. So of the seventy, we minus seven, and we have sixty-three people in the department.
Correct.
Okay, and then the last quick question is, I'm just a little confused with the sergeants and the lieutenants. There's still nine and three, but the numbers significantly went up. Is that to do with contracts?
Yes. Yes. That, that had to do with the contracts, the rolling in of longevity into senior steps, and a whole host of other contractual things that went into that.
Okay, thank you.
Plus, there were some acting positions and whatnot that add to it.
Pat, you're all set? Okay, anybody else for that department, Police Department, Department two-ten? Please state your name and precinct number, please.
Sylvia Whiting, Precinct Six. I have a question about the in-service training and education and the in-service training and tuition. I just wondered, there's nothing for training and education, there is thirty-nine thousand dollars for tuition. Just wondered, what about diversity training with the Police Department or sensitivity training or anything? Where would that...
I gotta rule that question out of order, because that's a policy decision, that can be discussed at the Board of Selectmen's meeting every, every week, just about every other week. We're just talking about line items on this budget here. And we'll never get through the, the night here, we start getting into that. And it was already, the procurement officer talked about, um, that issue before, too, so I appreciate it if you had another question regarding doll amounts.
What would the difference be? Why is there nothing in, in service training and education and money and...
Okay, generally, we can have that answer.
It's in service is zero, but the in-service tuition is fifty thousand. It was just an adjustment.
That was a line on, just an adjustment in line on, to move, in, the tuition is to pay for classes that we send them additional, over and above the in-service training. So we're required by the state to send everybody to forty hours of in-service training. Over and above that, we spend money and tuition for classes that are outside the state training.
And if you look at that first in-service training and education, that's been zeroed for a few years. That's actually just a lingering tag.
Okay, it's a lingering...
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm not seeing anybody. All right, that closes that department. Thank you. All right, now we're moving on to page fifty-three. And again, correct me if I'm jumping ahead, page fifty-three, Department two-twenty, that's the Fire Department. And that was for Pat Colburn. Please rise, state your name and precinct number and your questions, please.
Pat Colburn, Precinct Four. I have the same questions, and then I just have one other. Are there any partially funded positions in this budget?
No, there's no partially...
Any open positions?
So yes, currently we have two. Um, we were put on hold by civil service till a new list came out, uh, which came out in, towards the end of March, at least. And then we had a firefighter who was out on one-eleven F, uh, unfortunately just recently passed of cancer.
Sorry to hear that.
Yeah, so that would be the other position we can now...
I'm very sorry to hear that. And are there any on leave that, for whatever reason or not, um, working in the department?
Not working?
Well, on leave, they're not available to be scheduled.
Oh, yeah, no, we have, yeah, sure, we have quite a few. We have, uh, two are on military deployment, one is in the academy, um, one is out on maternity leave, and we have a number of firefighters who are out injured. I believe the total is, I actually have it right here. Um, we have six members, correction, five members now, out on, uh, IOD, uh, a couple were injured at a fire. So we just actually should be getting them back hopefully soon.
So that's ten, so it's fifty-five people in the department?
When you say in the department, you mean currently working?
Yes, I'm sorry, I don't have a better way to phrase it.
Yep. We have two, we have two non-uniformed employees as well. We have a mechanic and a, um, program administrator. That's, that's included in the sixty-five.
Thank you. I have a question about the ambulance, because I wasn't sure where to ask it. I don't know if it's appropriate, but, um, do you have any idea of percentage or dollar amount of what, um, of the ambulance bills go unpaid?
Go unpaid? I don't know the exact percentage of what, I mean, there's, there's definitely a lag. Uh, once they bill, they have ninety days to pay, and then it goes out for collection. There are some hardship that come across my desk. Currently, currently we've, uh, currently this year, we're approximately one point six or seven million in, in revenue. What we bill for, I can get back to you on that answer.
Okay, unless Bill Rowe has any information, Bill? Do you have any on the... I'm just trying to get a rough handle on, do, do most of the people pay their bills? Do we, are we looking at thirty percent who don't?
I would say yes. I, I, I believe most do. It, it's, the ambulance is tricky, because if you have a motor vehicle accident, there is a ten thousand dollar cap typically put on that. It's whoever can get to it first, and then it goes, whether it goes into a lawsuit or whatnot. Most insurance companies are really good at paying. Medicare is good at paying, but they pay at their rate. So what you see is we bill for Medicare and saying, "This is what we're paying you." So we're restricted there, and I'm not exactly sure whether that goes into the percentage on collection.
And we actually have a professional billing company that does a lot of this work, and they've been aggressively going after any that have been lagging, and they've been doing a good job on it. But typically, people who have health insurance, that's where the, the payback comes pretty consistently.
Thank you.
You all set, Pat?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, anybody else for the Fire Department? Mr. Stolinski, please rise, state your name and precinct number and your questions.
George Stolinski, Precinct Two. I'm just looking on page fifty-four, uh, there's a whole slew of, uh, expenses that Uh, George Stolinski, Precinct Two. I'm just looking on page fifty-four. Uh, there's a whole slew of, uh, expenses that are now added in that weren't, uh, there the previous year. Why is that, and where did they come from originally?
So these were items that in the past had been put on the capital budget, and they really don't belong on a capital budget. They're annual purchases that we make. And if they're less than fifty thousand, they're not considered capital as separate town meeting articles. And realistically, when we buy something every year, it should be in the operating budget, and we've been trying to make a move in that direction. Uh, we have another one that we didn't, weren't able to do in this year's budget, but down the road, we talk about lake management, for example. It's an annual thirty-five thousand dollar expense. If it's less, less than fifty thousand dollars, and it's a routine purchase, it actually belongs in the budget. And so this year, it, it makes the Fire Department budget look a little disproportionately increased. But those are purchases that we used to see come out of free cash at the end typically, and it really is not an appropriate use of free cash, because you're filling a budget hole. So this is an effort to stop structural deficits.
Thank you.
And if one, I mean specifics on what it is, certainly the chief.
I think he's all set. Thank you. Anybody else for the Fire Department? All right, seeing none. Okay, that department is now closed. We're gonna move on. All right, next up, I had a hold on the page fifty-seven, Educational Regional School Department. Excuse me, Department Three-O-One. I believe that was Peter Brown, and he mentioned to me, I don't think, I don't believe he's here. He left. He was, with, he is withdrawing that hold. So that closes that department. The next one I have up is on page fifty-eight. Engineering Department, which is Department Four-Eleven, page fifty-eight. And that was George Stolinski.
You know...
Name and precinct number and your questions.
I needed the exercise. I didn't get it earlier today. Saves you from going to the gym. You know, I was just looking, and I looked at these numbers and everything. One of the things that I, I found quite interesting is, and this happens in a couple of departments, where a salary line, if you take a look, I think it was on the Assistant Town Engineer, his previous salary for last year was a hundred and six thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, and we go into a hundred and six thousand, four hundred and forty-nine.
Yes.
I mean, wouldn't it be just as simple, just to leave the nineteen dollars off?
No. A good question, but no. What happened was, um, last year, that was an unsettled contract, that particular, some of those positions are in labor unions, and when we had initially planned the budget, we didn't know exactly where those numbers would come in. So it's likely he did not make that one-oh-six last year. It probably came in a little lower. And then when it averaged out through the contract, you're gonna see some line items that, line items that went up a little more, and some salary line items that only went up point-oh-two. That's all contractual adjustments. And then the other adjustment that takes place in all of the salaries is there's a different number of pay periods each year. Sometimes it's twenty-six point two pay period, sometimes it's twenty-six point one. And depending on that, you get these little weird anomalies, but that's directly related to what had been budgeted in last year's budget. And then we actually, to the credit of our labor unions, came in a little lower in some of those areas than we expected, uh, and were settled. And so this year, you'll see less of an increase.
Well, you'll notice, I mean, if you look at these things, and you see a nineteen-dollar difference here, ten dollars in another department, a five dollars here. It just looks crazy when you take a look at the book, if you're looking at the numbers.
But if you look at the percentages in, in alignment with the contract.
That's your job, not mine.
Right. Absolutely. But it's my job to answer it, so that's all good.
Okay, anybody else?
You give a twenty-dollar bill and call it.
Anybody else? Seeing none, that department is now closed. We're gonna move on. Next one I have up is on page sixty-one. That's the Highway Construction and Maintenance, Department Number Four-Twenty-Two, and that was Pat Colburn, followed by Stephen Phillips. Pat Colburn, please.
Pat Colburn, Precinct Four. I was just wondering what was going on with the Motor Equipment Operator Craftsman. Uh, that number seems to be all over the place.
So throughout, I'm sorry, throughout all of these budgets in the DPW? What's that? There's no labor in, no, there's no labor in that one? So which, what line item were you looking at?
The Motor Equipment Operator Craftsman. Are we on DPW? Were we on page fifty-nine?
No.
Oh.
Sixty-one. There was no hold on fifty-nine.
What page are we on?
Sixty-one.
Okay, let me, let me, uh...
I'm sorry?
Take a step here. Page sixty-one.
Yeah.
And it was a hold on the Highway Construction and Maintenance Department.
I put it on the other one, but that's okay. Never mind.
Okay, I didn't hear that.
That's okay.
We, I can answer that question after for you.
Thank you.
Okay, so... Mr. Phillips, Stephen Phillips is, is... No, he's there. He moved up to the back. Okay. Please state your name, precinct number, and then your question, please.
Sure, Stephen Phillips, Precinct One. I had a question, just a question on your, I just looked at two items on this list, nineteen and twenty. Nineteen, it says cement, gravel, sand paving, resurfacing, and combined, they make up thirty-six percent of the budget. I'm not sure what it takes, or what your process of, the town's process or procedure is between patching and actually fixing a street.
Can anybody answer that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Jafun. I will tell you that materials costs have skyrocketed. So with what's going on in the economy, we have seen a huge increase in the material costs for these. But if you'd like to know the process, certainly I defer to Mr. Jafun.
Paul, can you just identify yourself for the, uh, town meetings?
Yep. Paul Jafun, Interim, uh, Public Works Superintendent. Uh, I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Moderator, can you repeat the question? What, what exactly are you looking for?
Well, looking at the numbers, it looks approximately thirty-six percent of, hold on, what'd you ask? Thirty-six percent of resurfaced street supplies and cement, gravel, sand paving. I just took the numbers and said to myself, if that's to patch the street, what's the process and procedure to actually repave some of the streets? Because some of them appear to be repatched a lot, and, and not redone. So this, I'm sure this is a process.
What's the process to pave a whole street?
Yes, what's the Department of Public Works, what's their procedure before they do that? Or is it all repatching?
Repaving a street will ninety-nine percent of the time be done with Chapter Ninety funds we receive from the state.
So that's not here.
I'm sorry?
That's not here.
I can't, I'm sorry, sir.
It's not here in the budget.
It's not in here, no.
So earlier on, you voted to pass an article that said, "Receive Funds For Road Repair." That's the article where that money comes in.
Okay, thank you.
You're all set? Okay, anybody else for that Department, Highway Construction and Maintenance? Mr. Cone, please rise, state your name and precinct number and your question, please.
It's likely for you.
Last year, Robert Cone, Precinct Five.
Thank you.
On last year's budget, I received a street report of how much it's gonna cost to repair these streets, and Chapter Ninety money isn't gonna cover it. We're into the ten million more to restart to repair these streets. Now, if we're gonna depend on, uh, depend on the chapter money, a lot of these streets aren't gonna get repaired. That's a report I asked. The Public Works sent it over. I'm s-
Uh, can we check the batteries on the microphone? Stand by, Paul. You have to pay for that microphone now. I think you, uh...
Okay.
You might have broken it.
There it is.
Oh, you're better now, yeah. Well, a few people said they might have a toggle back here to shut you off. I don't, I don't.
Yeah, you get a thousand words.
Mr. Moderator, while we wait, just a point of information, a point of order?
There you go.
One, one second, John, hang on. Thank you, Kevin. Do you have a point of information?
Just, if he's-
State your name and precinct number.
Yes, John Inzavino, Precinct Four. My question is, you, um, it's already been answered that Chapter Ninety is not part of this budget, so why would we be talking Chapter Ninety money when we're on this budget?
Only because eventually, money has got to be put in this budget. Our streets are disgusting. I, my neighborhood looks, it, it looks awful. That's all we have, is black lines. As a matter of fact, John, it cost me fifty bucks, because the stuff they put on the road gets into your tires. I had to go get the thing done. I should have, but I didn't.
Uh, Mr. Cone, Mr. Cone, hang on. I'll let you ask that question, but if you want to ask about the paving materials, something in this budget, please ask those questions.
Yeah, I'd like to know if we can put some more money in to repair more streets, because Chapter Ninety doesn't cover it. We need more money to fix the streets.
All right, see if we can get an answer for you.
So realistically, the, this budget is for specifically repair, highway repair. If you were going to actually budget to fix streets, it would be hundreds of thousands of dollars per street.
Millions, millions.
Per street. Now, and just for clarification, on the list that Mr. Cone is referencing, that really looks at every street and what it would be to get every street up to top priority. So there are some streets in that, that are at number two, or three, or four on a scale. There are others that are, that are much more costly. So it, yes, is it millions and millions if every street were gonna be perfect? Yes, but we couldn't even do that realistically timewise. You couldn't have a contractor that could do that.
I was gentle. I was really up almost over twenty, but I cut it in half.
Right.
But something, in the future, someone has to take this in consideration to keep up with the maintenance of streets too. That's all I was trying to bring a point across, sir.
Man.
Thank you, Mr. Cone. Anybody else for this department? Highway Construction and Maintenance, Department Four-Twenty-Two. Seeing none. This department is closed. Anybody else on the board? Nope. This department's closed. We're gonna move on. Next up is page sixty-four, Street Lighting. Uh, Department Four-Twenty-Four, and that's Pat Colburn, Precinct Four. Please rise, state your name and precinct number, please.
Pat Colburn, Precinct Four. Can you just explain why this, these numbers are all over the place? From two-thirty to two-sixty, down to two-ten? I mean, I can barely see when I drive now. I hope you're not cutting lights or wattage.
Uh, through you, Mr. Moderator, this is...
Yes, go ahead.
This is, uh, really just an effort by the budget team to look at prior years and work that has been done or will be done in the near future, and adjust accordingly.
If you look at the actual for twenty-one, it was a hundred eighty-one thousand. So it had been over-budgeted almost in every year. In the past five years, it had been over-budgeted for the number of streets. This is a replacement. This is when we go on and replace. This isn't about new lighting, let's say, necessarily. It could be. But generally, we have not used that much.
Fifty million years ago, that was...
And traffic signals.
That was the contracted amount, so you're, you're confident that it's just been over-budgeted?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not so much a contracted amount, because it is for traffic lights as well, but it's just, we've always had too much in there. It was one of those line items that was just over-budgeted.
Thank you for fixing that.
Okay, uh, John Linehan, please rise, state your name and precinct number and your question, please.
John, John Linehan, Precinct One. Just a really quick question. Shouldn't we be saving on electricity with all the modern light bulbs coming in now?
This is not a like, this doesn't, isn't electricity. This is just the actual lights.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, through you, this actually, we do pay the street lights in a single utility bills with this account.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's wrong.
Yeah, um...
Uh, Mr. Linehan, go back to the microphone if you could, want to make that comment, because people can't hear you. Oh, I think we're all set. Okay. Anybody else on that department? Nope, I don't see anybody. I think we're all set. That closes that department. Next up is on page sixty-seven. Human Services, Department Five-O-Five, Carolyn Campbell, Precinct Four. Please rise, state your name and precinct number and your question.
Hi, Carolyn Campbell, Precinct Four. I just have a quick question about this budget. It says, you know, it's the Human Services Director, and it's eleven thousand dollars. Where is the rest of it?
That is our VNA Director, Public, our Public Health Director, Janice Bruce. So similar to Mark Tisdale, who is the Town Engineer, and also the Executive Director of, uh, Development Services. Janice's position is the same.
So this amount is the additional amount she receives for being the Human Services Director, as opposed to her other salary, which is in the VNA.
This was to take on the oversight of several other departments.
Yes, thank you.
All right, anybody else for this department? Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move on. That department is now closed. Next up, I have page sixty-eight, Border Health, Department Five-Ten, and that's Mr. George Stolinski. Please rise, state your name and precinct number, and your questions, please.
George Stolinski, Precinct Two. Once again, the nineteen dollars and fifteen dollars, I think was explained earlier. I won't go any further on this, because it's silly. Thank you.
All right, anybody else on that department? Seeing none, that department is now closed. Next up is on page seventy-two. Library Department, Department Number Six-Ten.
And I would like to announce that our new library director is here. If he could just take a moment to introduce himself.
Sure, please go right ahead.
He didn't know what he was gonna do this evening, so.
I'm Christopher McGee. I'm the new library director. Uh, this is my third week on the job.
Welcome to town meeting.
All right, Greg, could you, uh, state your name and precinct number? And is it Greg Potraka?
Poe Cracker.
Poe Cracker.
Greg Poe Cracker, Precinct Two.
Thank you.
Uh, just some clarification on the electricity, fuel, water, peers.
Yes.
Under the twenty-twenty-one actual and not on the rest of the budget.
And nice to meet you face-to-face.
Yes.
We talk on Facebook all the time. So, um, yeah, all of those items in all of our buildings were combined and put into facilities, uh, last year, I believe, we started that practice. So the budget team felt it was more prudent, because what we had was, those were line items that were sometimes a little over-budgeted or under-budgeted, and it was more logical to combine them, put them all into facilities, which is where they all come out of, and really reflect facilities and operations, as opposed to actual library operations. So you'll see this in, in several buildings. You saw the same thing with auto repair in a lot of different budget line items. It disappeared last year and moved all into Fleet Maintenance. So that collectively, the Fleet Maintenance Department is responsible for all the auto repairs, and, except fire trucks, and the library, and all the other buildings. All of that went into facilities for the utilities.
Okay, thank you very much.
You all set?
Yes, thank you.
All right, anybody else for that department? Library Department, Six-Ten. All right, seeing none, that department is now closed. Next up, page seventy-four. Recreation and Youth Services, Department Six-Thirty, and we have Carolyn Campbell, Precinct Four.
Hi, thank you. Um, can you let me know how many?
State your name and precinct number, sorry. Just for the people at home.
Carolyn Campbell, Precinct Four. Um, how many are, um, how many of the councils that were considered the Youth Commission Councilors are there still in the Recreation Department?
Two. There's still the same number that there were. We did not reduce that service.
Okay, has been given all the, um, increase with mental health issues, has there been any plans to increase the numbers?
No, we're sufficiently staffed. They're able to handle the load as they come in.
Thank you.
You all set, Carolyn?
In fact, we have our, one of our youth counselors here right now.
Okay, anybody else for that department, Recreation?
Thank you, I'm all set for now.
Okay.
My other concerns will wait till next year.
Thank you, Carolyn. Uh, Mr. Cone, please state your name, precinct number, and your questions. This is for the people at home. They have, they don't know you yet.
Robert Cone, Precinct Five. On your summer programs, like your people that work in the playgrounds, how much do they get per hour?
Uh, Matt Koshon, Recreation Director. It's a great question. Um, through you, Mr. Moderator, uh, starting salaries, if you're new, would be minimum wage. Um, returning counselors, do you get a pay bump?
You said minimum wage is fifteen-something an hour?
Minimum wage in Massachusetts right now is fourteen-twenty-five, and that goes up to fifteen dollars an hour to, uh, next year, I believe.
So they'll be fifteen, fifteen, whatever it is, by next year?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cone. Anybody else for this department? Seeing none, that now closes that department. Next up is on page seventy-five, Hox Department, Number Six-Fifty, and that's Matt Callis, Precinct Three. Matt, could you identify yourself, precinct name and number, and all the particulars?
Thank you, Matthew Callis, Precinct Three. I think this may have been answered, but I was, uh, wondering, well, the vehicle maintenance seems to be zero in two different spots.
Yep, so exactly. It's just like the utilities. When we created the Fleet Maintenance Division, instead of having different departments have a few thousand, a few... a few thousand, a few thousand, a few thousand in those line items for vehicle maintenance, we consolidated it all into fleet maintenance. We'll eventually get better software even for that where we can monitor the repair of all vehicles in the whole town fleet.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else for that department? Which is Recreation, uh, excuse me, POCs Department, Department six-fifty on page seventy-five. Anybody else? Seeing none. Let's move on. That closes that department. Next up, I have on page seventy-six, Community Events, Department six-ninety-five, and that's Mr. George Stolinski. Please rise, state your name and precinct number and all the particulars.
Should be on. Okay. George Stolinski, precinct two, once again. Concerned with the Fourth of July parade. Last year, in fiscal twenty-one, it was nineteen-hundred-and-five dollars spent, then went to twelve-thousand, seven-hundred dollars in fiscal twenty-two. Now we're looking for thirty-eight-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Why the increase?
Fireworks.
Where?
July first and, I bet there's a meeting this week.
Uh, to you, Mr. Moderator. July first, over at the West School Complex, same as before.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for that department? Carolyn Campbell, please state your name, precinct number, and your question, please.
Carolyn Campbell, precinct four. Since we brought up the fireworks, how come they're not on July third like they have been?
Procurement of a company to do it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Eric Coleman, please rise, state your name and precinct number and your questions, please.
Eric Coleman, precinct five. Downtown beautification is not an event. Is there another place that this should be on?
Anybody answer that?
I mean, I guess you could put it in any number. You could put it in parks.
I think it would be more appropriate in parks.
It's in community events because sometimes it's actually done by the downtown beautification committee. They have a day that they go out and do it. Some of it comes that way, so it just was put into that line item, but I guess it could be moved into a different department if someone wanted to.
All right. Anybody else for that department? Which is Community Events, Department six-ninety-five. Anybody else? Seeing none. That closes that department. Next up, page seventy-eight. I have Health Insurance Department, Department number nine-oh-nine, and that goes to Lou Jito.
Thank you.
Lou, please state your name, precinct number, and your questions.
Lou Jito, precinct four. There was something on the front table, I believe, and I'm going to make a motion. I move that the Health Insurance Department, item nine-oh-nine, the line item transfer to OPEB trust be reduced from thirty-five thousand dollars to zero such that the new health insurance expense totals equal ten thousand, seven, ten, excuse me, ten million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars, and that the thirty-five thousand dollars be transferred to the stabilization fund.
Who seconded that? Okay, thank you. Jerry McDonald, precinct four. Okay, who seconded? Okay, go ahead.
Adopting this amendment and moving the money to the stabilization fund allows you to decide to use the money in an emergency and at the same time to protect our bond rating. Our bond rating depends on our fund reserve balance, and our stabilization fund is an important part of our fund reserve balance. By comparison, putting the money in the other post-employment benefits trust does not allow you to use the money in an emergency. Let me be clear. This amendment continues to protect our retired employees. Just like in every other year, we will still appropriate enough money to honor our obligations to our retirees, to pay for their health care and other obligations. This money remains in the account line item that I had mentioned before, the ten million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars. That is a critical piece of information. There is no loss to people. Now let's look at the line item, other post-employment benefit trust fund. Accounting principles require that money be set aside to fund all known funding obligations. When a person retires, there's a projection of life expectancy and the benefits to be paid. That money should be set aside according to accounting principles, but it isn't. That is what creates the unfunded obligation. Statewide, this obligation is underfunded by billions. That would be a B dollars, according to the accounting principles that I've just mentioned. Stoughton has an unfunded OPEB obligation of nine, of one, one, excuse me, the number's so large, a hundred and ninety-eight million, three-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars as of last June thirtieth. And we've set aside three-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand dollars. So we funded less than zero-point-two, that's zero-point-two percent, of the unfunded liability. If we put the thirty-five thousand dollars into that account, the number would still be less than zero-point-two percent of the total unfunded liability. Do you think we'd move the needle on our bond rating because of that? If you want to develop plans to put the money aside upfront to fund the unfunded liability, we really should take a little bit of time and figure how we're going to do that. It would cost a huge amount of money, an increase in our budget, to do that. So what's the plan? The plan could be to put a little bit more money into that account or to put the money into our stabilization fund with the same outcome in terms of our bond rating and an increase in the opportunity to use that money in an emergency. We're likely to be in a recession in a little while. We know that funds to pay for supplies is continuing to go up. I guess if I were running a business, I'd want to maintain as many options as I have. I don't know how you feel about it, but that's where I come out, and I would support this amendment. Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Grimm, did you want to? And then we'll open it up to other people's questions.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. May I ask, I have a point of information or a point of order.
Sure. State your name.
Carolyn Campbell, precinct four. The, the motion calls for to reduce the line item and then put the money into the stabilization count. Can we, the stabilization account's not on the floor, so at this point, I believe we can only reduce the account, um, the budget line item from thirty-five thousand dollars to zero, and then we would have to talk about putting the money into the stabilization account later when that article comes up. Am I correct?
I think that's a fair point. I agree with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
So I would like to respond to Mr. Jito, and, and Mr. Jito's assertions about trying to always look at our bond rating are absolutely right. Mr. Jito's assertions about stabilization are extremely important. The Finance Committee has a policy that each year we depend less and less on free cash to balance our budget. That actually is always indirectly funding stabilization because whatever doesn't get used in free cash in the budget, free cash is our stabilization fund. Our rating agencies are aware that we make that initiative, and that's very important that they know that. Thirty-five thousand dollars into our stabilization is point-zero-three percent of our total budget. Our stabilization number is about four or five percent right now of our total budget. It should be about seven or eight percent realistically, so it does need to go up, but we are showing a concerted effort to do that. And putting thirty-five thousand point-zero-three percent of our budget into that is negligible. The point with the rating agencies, and I speak directly to rating agency representatives, I spoke to them just before we borrowed for the fire station, and one of the things we emphasized was that in this year's budget, we have added a line item to commit to funding OPEB. I realize the number is an absolute drop in the bucket, as Mr. Jito says. It is, just like the point-o-three on the stabilization, it's negligible. But it's a message to the rating agencies that we are looking at all aspects of our financing, and we realize where we have some shortfalls, and we continue to work on those shortfalls. That's what this is an effort to do. We also have an OPEB transfer out of our health account later on in an article. That's important, too. We've been doing that right along. But that depends on what our healthcare reserve has in it. It's not showing a, a commitment to it always. It's an article that can or cannot be put on. By putting it as a line item in the budget, to Mr. Jito's point, if we have a year we can put more in, great. It's a line item in the budget, and the town manager, the next town manager might say, we got a hundred thousand this year, let's put it into OPEB. But if we have a very tight year next year, the budget team may look and say, you know what? We can't put any in that line item, we'll zero it next year. So having that thirty-five thousand really is a way to show the commitment. This line item is to show the rating agencies a commitment. And when I spoke directly to the gentleman for Moody's, and I did put on the front table frequently asked questions about GASP, I think, Mr. Linehan, you had asked me the other day to talk a little bit more about OPEB, so I found a frequently asked questions about OPEB because frankly, the GASP experts can explain it a lot better than I can. And it really, the rating agencies do look at the effort. Yeah, but they certainly love to see us much more funded, absolutely. But looking down the road at some of the major projects, we have a South School coming online, it's critical that our rating agencies stay strong. They're not going to raise us for putting thirty-five thousand in, but it's going to be a reason why they may not lower us, why we may not get a negative look, because we're making an effort. It's an effort to show prudence and fiscal management and an understanding of these GASP requirements, this GASP forty-five requirement. I don't disagree. You could put it in stabilization, you could put it in OPEB. We're already showing that we're working on our stabilization fund, so why not show that we're also working on another area that they take into consideration? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grimm. Okay. Any other questions? Dave Laurie? Do you?
David Laurie, precinct six.
Okay, go ahead.
If it's okay.
Yeah, you have a question or?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, there's a, a comment in the argument for this.
This is for?
For this motion.
Yeah, for the motion, okay.
For the motion, that's where I'm referring.
Sure.
It talks about how the money is better served in the budget so that it could, just as it becomes an unrestricted money for all the things that we need in stabilization and other things, including turnbacks. Is that, is that what you're arguing? Is that we need the money, it's more important to have the money in the budget than in OPEB?
That is my argument, yes. And I'm, what I'm saying is that there are a lot of concerns being expressed about what the future economic situation is going to be. And to put money away in a position that you can't use it as opposed to putting it away in another account that has the same financial implications in terms of looking at what reserves we have is, I think, important. I think it's important to have, even though it's a small amount of money, thirty-five thousand dollars, it funds something that we wouldn't otherwise be able to fund if we need the money. I mean, if I were a businessperson and had that option, I would take my option ten times out of ten.
But you're not arguing, though, that we should reduce the number down to zero because why, what's the point? It's such a big number. What's any amount of money for OPEB? Why doesn't it all go to stabilization instead of even a dime going to OPEB? Are you, in other words, are you recognizing the importance of OPEB contributions for the bond rating, the recognition that we would have if we sent money to OPEB? Like, why, why are you arguing on such a small number if it shows and reflects that we recognize an obligation to OPEB for the bond markets to say, Stoughton, you deserve a better rating, because, look, you understand that you have an obligation?
What I'm saying is that there are three-hundred-and-fifty-one cities and towns across the state, all of which have the same problem. And the total amount of money that would have to be set aside is in the billions of dollars across the state. So our putting thirty-five thousand dollars away compared to not doing that is going to change the bond rating. And what I'm also saying is, show me where that makes a difference and when it's going to make a difference. If you were to put thirty-five thousand dollars into an item, looking at it as a project, you would put thirty-five thousand dollars in, you would expect to get a product back, and that product would be equal to thirty-five thousand dollars. I haven't seen anything that says, oh, if we do this, then in fact, this next year, we're going to get back more than that amount of money. There's nothing to show that. And because there's nothing to show that, why do it when you have the opportunity to use that money in a different way if you come into a problem? That's the argument.
Mr. Moderator, through you, is it, is it okay for me to make a statement or are you only allowing questions?
Questions at this point in time. You can come back for a statement because other people have questions.
Well, I'm here for the comments, actually.
Oh, comments. Anybody else have a technical question to Mr. Jito, to Mr. Jito's motion? Go ahead. John Linehan, please state your name, precinct number, and your question. Then we'll get into the debate, but we're going to finish this budget this evening, so please, everybody stay. Don't anybody run out the door.
Uh, John Linehan, precinct one. Obviously, this situation is not unique to Stoughton, and I do question where we are in the, in the queue of being in deficit on it. But there are clearly structural issues with the financial management of the municipalities of Massachusetts and maybe beyond. Is anything taking place on a bigger level to address what is just a deeper and deeper hole being dug every year?
Realistically, to the chair, realistically, this is a national problem. You have states that are in dire, dire situations as a result of this. It is a mathematics equation. It wasn't until the nineteen-eighties that GASP even looked at this, and this is how it got so looming, because people weren't paying attention to it. So it's a national level problem. A few states are in good shape, but the vast majority are not.
So is anything being done to address it on a bigger level than town by town?
Not, no, I'm, I'm looking at Sue because she follows this on a more national level than I do, and, and the answer is really no. And I think, I, I totally understand the, the question of the, why are we bothering with thirty-five thousand if nobody's doing anything about the trillions probably or multi-hundreds of billions nationally? But the reality is, we're not running a business. When we are reviewed by rating agencies, we are not reviewed as a business. We are reviewed as a municipality, a government entity when they are setting that rate, and they are looking at whether or not government entities are taking note of this. And they are looking at whether or not government entities are taking note of this GASP standard. To simply say, "We can't touch it because it's so overwhelming anyway, so the hell with it,"
Yeah.
Isn't really what they want to hear. I talk to these people directly.
So, do you have an idea-
Last question, Mr. Lennihan.
All right, thank you. Do you have an idea where we stand on, say, a per capita basis, the town of Stoughton versus other cities and towns of Massachusetts?
I don't have the per capita. We're on the lower third, probably, or in the, yeah, we're in the lower third of, of a lot of the communities. And that's why it's so important that we, we are not in a great place even within Massachusetts. So to not show an extra commitment to something, and I, I agree, it's hundreds of millions, but it's an effort.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we get into debate? Mr. Enzirino, please state your name and precinct number.
Gotcha. John Enzirino, precinct four. I'd ask the maker of the motion, would you be assuming to take that thirty-five thousand from the free cash on the general fund and reduce the general fund by the thirty-five thousand because the stabilization is not part of the general fund budget? And would that then in turn reduce the tax levy by another thirty-five thousand dollars?
I, I don't think that I heard your question very well, John, but-
Well, let me repeat it. You want to take the thirty-five thousand out of the budget, which would have to be a reduction to the general fund budget that was up there, the hundred-and-twelve million plus. And I would just assume you'd take the two-point-six million that was being put into the budget, and you could reduce that by the thirty-five thousand, and the stabilization fund would just pick up the thirty-five thousand from the free cash. I assume, and maybe Mr. Rowe-
Whatever way works.
Well, and then I would ask him, I would ask Mr. Rowe, if the thirty-five thousand were taken out of free cash and put-
You would ask the moderator, go through the moderator.
Or through you, Mr. Moderator, through you and through the town accountant if he can answer the question. If the thirty-five thousand was removed from the budget, would that reduce the general fund requirement by the thirty-five thousand? I assume it would come out of the, the funding source of the free cash, and it would go into stabilization. And if that's the case, does that thirty-five thousand then come off the tax levy and increase the fifty-two thousand nine hundred that was left behind already?
Well, let me, let me just, one thing is, the only thing that's on the table right now is this budget here. Okay? To, to move money into another budget is not on the table. So I'm not following what you want to do.
If you take the money out of the budget-
Thirty-five thousand out of this budget.
Thirty-five. I don't care where you go. You're going to put it in your pocket for now and save it for later. But if you take the thirty-five thousand out, that will reduce the required amount on the general funded budget, because the total of this budget is included in it. So I assume the one-hundred-and-twelve million plus gets reduced by thirty-five thousand. Is that correct, Mr. Rowe?
No.
Or through you, Mr. Moderator, whoever can answer.
I just want to be clear on the semantics of that, though. When we talk about free cash and we talk about stabilization, if Mr. Gito's goal is to increase stabilization and unrestricted fund balance, free cash is unrestricted fund balance. That's, we've had this discussion that it's different from turnbacks and all of those other things. So, yes, if you just reduce the budget and you don't put it in stabilization, you absolutely could reduce the tax levy another thirty-five thousand. But if the goal is to put the money somewhere else and you take it out of the free cash, now ultimately, you're reducing your unrestricted fund balance by thirty-five thousand, and that sort of defeats the purpose of when we talk about rating agencies trying to increase the unrestricted fund balance, because that's what free cash is.
Mr. Rowe, did you want to weigh in on that?
So, right now, we have a balanced budget. If we cut the budget thirty-five thousand, we could cut our reliance on, yeah, you can either cut your reliance on free cash from two-point-six million, cut that by thirty, thirty-five thousand, the property tax levy is the same. Or you could decrease the amount that we're raising in the tax levy, so leave another thirty-five thousand of property taxes on the table, so to speak. Or, you know, if, if Town Council will allow it, we just change the, change, leave the thirty-five thousand as is and just change the description in the budget instead of transfer it to OPEB to transfer it to stabilization within the health insurance budget and make no, no increase or decrease. So that's a question for Town Council. I'm not sure if the third alternative is viable or not.
So it's sort of two-part. One, is it within the scope of the motion that was made, and two, transferring it to stabilization from just this article. We're not getting to stabilization until Article thirty-six, so I think the only thing that's on the floor right now is whether or not to zero out that thirty-five thousand. When we get to stabilization on Article thirty-six, you can build it back in there.
Okay. So right now, all we're going to do here, just for clarity, with Town Council reps, is to move or zero out the thirty-five thousand in this budget. You know, that's the only thing that, right now, we can do that's open, is this budget here. And if you want to get into stabilization with some other part, article somewhere else, you can move that money somewhere else.
All right. To clarify-
It's just for clarity.
We move in the thirty-five thousand, at some point, is going to affect the bottom line of the hundred-and-twelve million.
Correct. No, I agree with you on that.
And that's, and that's what I'm asking, okay? That, that would come out of the one-hundred-and-twelve thousand, because it's not in the budget anymore. Right? That would be, thank you.
Could I ask a question?
You can.
I mean, all I was trying to do was take that thirty-five thousand dollars and put it somewhere where it can be used. I don't want the thirty-five thousand dollars to go away at the end of the day. I thought that I could take it from here and move it somewhere else. There is no place where I see stabilization fund. Did we pass that by earlier on?
No, we haven't.
No, it's later on.
So if we didn't do it, then why can't I put it there?
Because-
Because we haven't opened it up yet?
Yeah, it's not on the floor. The only thing that's on the floor is this, this department. You can make a change to this department, zero out that line item, and it stays over there till later. I'm checking with Town Council.
Maybe this is above my pay grade, huh?
What do you think?
Mr. Ma-
Just, just hang on a second, everybody.
So, Mr. Moderator, through you to the meeting, that's the way you've handled all the articles thus far. So if you want to allow it to be transferred to an article we haven't reached yet, that's within your discretion. But again, to be consistent with the way you've handled articles thus far this evening, just dealing with the one on the floor, and the only budget that's on the floor is nine oh nine, not the stabilization. So I don't know what your prior practice is, or what your history in entertaining emotions such as that is. Maybe it's consistent with that, I couldn't tell you that. You'd have to use your own judgment to determine that. But the only thing that's on the floor is department nine oh nine.
Well, Mr. Gito, if you want it to go to the stabilization, why can't we just take it out of this? If it passes, put it on the table, and then when stabilization comes up, you make a motion that that money's moved into, added to stabilization. Is there an issue with somebody else? Who else is asking?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I was going to ask if we would amend the motion to just reduce the budget, the line item by thirty-five thousand dollars, and then reduce the budget accordingly by the thirty-five thousand dollars. And then, at a subsequent time, if that motion passes, Mr. Gito can make a motion when we get to the article on the stabilization fund.
That sounds like a good plan. That way, we only talk about this one budget. Thank you.
And then, oh, to reduce the free cash that they're using for the budget so that we're taking it from the free cash and not from the tax levy or any other source. So reduce the free cash by thirty-five thousand dollars from the budget so that it would be available to put that money into-
That's not on, Carolyn, that's not on the table right now.
That's, that, this is not free cash money right now.
Not free cash.
This is general fund money. No, I, I under, okay, I, no, I understand that, but the budget, when you come to the budget, final budget article, because you got to reduce the budget by thirty-five thousand dollars, because we're reducing the budget by thirty-five thousand dollars. Right?
Correct.
If this motion passes, that's the goal here, to reduce the budget by thirty-five thousand dollars.
Correct.
Then, to reduce, when you're reducing where the part of the final budget's coming forth, that point, reduce the thirty-five thousand dollars from the free cash part of the budget funding.
I don't think free cash can be-
Not coming from free cash.
No. No, I think we, all we do tonight is reduce this thirty-five thousand from this account.
And then on the stabilization, you could have a separate motion, but-
My understanding is-
I'm not talking about the stabilization. I understand that the money would be there and that a motion could be made. But you're not changing free cash. But then, when we reduce the thirty-five thousand dollars from the final budget, where is the allocation? What's going to be reduced from the funding to, because of the thirty-five thousand dollars?
Look, that budget amount is going to be reduced by thirty-five thousand dollars.
Right, and then it lists all those sources, you know?
Right.
Taking this from that and this from that.
Until we get to-
It's going to be in limbo.
It's going to be in limbo on the table somewhere until we get to whatever article Mr. Gito wants to get. Stabilization fund? It might have been done in the past, but, you know, we have different Town Council here, different set of rules, which means, you know, different legalities are looked at by a different way. So, okay.
Thanks.
State your name and precinct number.
Ed Trumpio, precinct four, FinCon member. No, when you take it out of the line item, you're reducing the budget.
I understand that.
Okay, so now, the budget has a surplus of thirty-five thousand dollars. So it just sits there, and you, the article is completely separate from budget money because that's general fund money. The article is from free cash if anything's left over. That is not general fund money. So you'd have to reduce the allocation that went into the income side of the budget by thirty-five thousand dollars at, when we set the final budget, the total one-hundred-and-twelve million and change, and then thirty-five thousand would free up out of free cash, and then you could add that to the article to fund the stabilization. Because right now, all you're going to do is reduce the budget by thirty-five thousand, and it sits there, plus thirty-five thousand. Unless you reduce the income side to get to zero. And the only way to do that is reduce the free cash component, the two-point-three million or whatever's in there, by thirty-five thousand, and then that pops out of free cash, and then you can add that to the article and stick it in stabilization.
All right. Everybody just stand by for a moment here. So Carolyn, you going to explain that? Okay. Carolyn Campbell, you, you have the floor.
I thank you, Carolyn Campbell, precinct four. I just spoke with Town Council. The part of the motion would be, I guess, that would be appropriate to make at this time would be simply have Mr. Gito's motion be to reduce that line item and then the budget by thirty-five thousand dollars. When we vote on the whole final budget motion, at that point, it'll be the time to amend the proposed motion on Article thirteen to reduce the transfer for free cash by thirty-five thousand dollars.
Did you just check with Bill? So, you understand that, Bill? Bill Rowe?
Understand perfectly, Mr. Moderator, sure.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just want to be, you're okay with that?
Okay.
I'm sure everybody else understands.
I'm sorry, Bill, what was that? I don't mean to embarrass you.
Make, make sure everybody else understands, that's all.
Okay.
So, that's, so that is the, so right now, I'm proposing to amend the motion, Mr. Gito's motion, to simply focus on reducing that line item by thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. All right, Mr. Gito, could you, okay, one more time, Carolyn, to Mr. Gito.
Um, I'd like to offer an amendment to Mr. Gito-
Cut it loud.
Oh, sorry. It's figuring out where to stand where it's not too loud or loud, you know, loud enough. I'd like to make a, make a motion to amend the motion on the floor to split the proposed, your proposed motion into two parts, one of which we'll take up later, and to make the current motion to be reduce that line item by thirty-five thousand dollars to zero, thus reducing the budget by thirty-five thousand dollars. Thank you. So right now, I guess we will vote on whether or not we're going to take that thirty-five thousand dollars out of the budget once it's time to vote.
We got to do that now on this budget. Any, any other discussion? Can we move on on this? Okay. This is the amended motion, okay? That we just discussed. All right. We got to just set up the screen here.
Could we just have a, the amended?
Just say the amended motion.
Okay. Okay, that's, thank you. I should have, I should have taken a place one fine.
All right, we're just setting up the screen right now to vote on the amended motion.
Okay, I don't understand that really, but I do understand the agenda. And, and I can add some-
So, I don't know if he's right, but we might have a position as well. We've moved the budget, but we're not able to say.
That would be crazy. I mean, but that, that, that doesn't make sense.
We just ended up with a budget with a surplus.
End up with a budget with a surplus. And then what do we do with a surplus?
Next year, sort of going to free cash.
So, what we should have been able to do would then do with this surplus? Or something, we could do this a different way? Maybe you would be burning down that. I mean, this seems so simple. Why is it not so simple?
Because the law's about what money can be used for, how many years to use for which spending is going out. I mean, I would think it's-
So we can push through some of those.
Can you bring that motion back?
She did, and I accept it.
No, I want the amended motion.
I don't hear you. No, no, they, they heard me.
Oh, you can't bring that screen up?
I didn't listen to it. I, I said, that I- I mean, I don't know what else you could, you could run over and tell them that I-
Okay, I'm going to read Mr. Gito's amended motion here. We're going to call it the substitute. Transfer to O P E B thirty-five dollars, thirty-five thousand dollars to zero. Okay, now we're gonna vote on that. This is a substitute motion for Mr. Giido's motion. Once it goes up, we need to vote on it. Okay, get ready, vote now. Well, let's, let's try to vote on it. We gotta kinda conclude as much as we can. Just to modify his motion. Then we'll get back to Mr. Giido's motion. If this, right, if this passes.
We don't need to worry about it.
All right, motion fails. Forty-two years, fifty-five no, two abstentions. All right, now we're back to Mr. Giido's motion. Okay, comments? Mr. John Rock, please state your name and purpose. And precinct number. You have to use the microphone, I can't hear you.
Didn't we just, excuse me, Carolyn Campbell, precinct four, didn't we just vote on Mr. Giido's motion? He accepted it as a substitute motion?
But it failed, it failed.
Right, it failed, so now, there's no motion to vote on, we're back onto the budget, that article is closed, and we go on to wherever the next hole was, which I believe was the school department. No, he accepted it as a substitute motion.
Okay, only the substitution failed.
So we're voting on the original motion now? Because I thought what you had said that we were subs...
We can tone it down a little bit, we don't have to argue back and forth.
I know. I thought we were voting on whether or not, on the merits of the substitu-, on the merits of the motion, and that the original motion was substituted by what we said, so we were just voting once on the whole idea.
A substitute motion is a, like amended motion on the original motion, so you...
Right.
It's a separate motion to substitute the prior motion. That substitution motion failed, now we're back to the original motion.
So, nevermind.
Okay. Now, Mr. Giido's original motion's on the floor. John Rock?
Yeah, hi, John Rock, precinct three, and I'm sorry for doing this. Uh, I've been waiting to make a comment. I'm totally against Mr. Giido's motion. I think we need to make a commitment to funding O P E D as small as it might be. When we, so I was on the finance committee for nine years, and when I started, the stabilization funds were very small, and we added a little bit each year and built them up, so I think we need to show some commitment to funding our unfunded, a, a small amount of money as it is, so I would urge you to vote against this, and just leave the thirty-five thousand in the budget as it is. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
You can, Dave.
Dave Laurie?
David Laurie, precinct six. When the select, I think, I believe a majority of the select board had to allow this to come through, otherwise it wouldn't be in front of us. Then it had to go, the town manager obviously gave it to the select board, so she was in favor of making sure O P E D was getting at least a symbolic amount of money. We, we all know that thirty-five thousand is obviously just a symbolic amount of money. It's not gonna substantially move the needle for any of the things that we're talking about here, whether it's stabilization or O P E D. The fact is, is that when the finance committee accepted those things put, to put, put forward is because symbolically, we were helping how our town looked to the outside world. I believe this motion is very logical if all we did was think myopically about what's the smartest thing to do with our money inside of our town, but the fact is, we just funded two very major, uh, projects on long-term borrowing, and there's more in the pipeline so that we have to gussy up the way we present ourselves to the outside world by showing symbolically, little token amounts of money like thirty-five thousand shows that we recognize the obligation and responsibility to pay for that thing. So when you think about the token amount of money that we're showing the markets outside of our town, that this is important because as long as you check the box that you gave a realistic number to show that you're ponying up something to that obligation, you look better to the bond markets who are gonna set our interest rates, and believe me, when you move the needle on an interest rate by a fraction of one percent over thirty years, you, now you're talking about real money. Forget thirty-five thousand, because that's only a drop in the bucket compared to how much the town would be paying in interest payments. Let the people who understood how we have to present ourselves to the outside world, who brought those recommendations through the select board and the finance committee and in front of you now, to let our town look as good as possible with this amount of money. And by the way, when it comes to free cash, we had over five million dollars certified last November, which was the third highest amount of free cash we got in the last twenty years, if not longer. We had a huge amount. Turnback monies are at least, you know, two and a half million dollars, which in the old days, you know, it used to be one, one and a half million.
Dave, why don't I ask you to wrap it up?
So, well, while turnbacks were part of the argument inside some of the things I read about this motion. Point is, do the right thing and vote this down, let the outside world understand why we're, we're funding O P E D.
All right, Carolyn Campbell, did you give a point of order?
Carolyn, no, I have a motion, I'd like to make a motion to cut off debate, uh, to move the previous question.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. This is the cutoff debate on Mr. Giido's motion.
Yes, please.
His original motion. We're back to? Yeah, the original motion that he put forth originally, way back twenty minutes ago or something like that. All right? Everybody understand that? Okay, well, let's do a voice vote to cutoff debate. This'll stop the discussion, okay? All those in favor, we're gonna do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, debate is cut off. All right, now we're gonna go to the vote. If we're ready. We're voting on Lou's motion. Original motion. We're voting, we're voting on his original motion, right? The original motion he had. Not the substitute. You're gonna have to use the mic, Joe, I can't hear him, maybe he's saying it.
Joe Scardino, precinct one. Just a point of clarification. Mr. Giido proposed a substitute motion with respect to this money, I just wanted to make sure.
That's great.
That's my point, Mr. Moderator, thank you very much.
Thank you for your point, appreciate it. Yes. Okay, once it comes up on the screen, please vote accordingly. On Gi-, Mr. Giido's motion.
Mr. Moderator, could you restate the motion? Eric Coleman, precinct five.
Here it is. It's at the bottom.
Move that in the health insurance department, nine-oh-nine, the line item transfer to, which one are we voting on?
What are you doing?
I need you to help him.
Now, just stand by, we need to clarify what's on the screen here. Just stand by for another minute, please.
I don't understand that really, but I do understand that. And, and I can add some...
Just wanna explain, this is the motion that you see on the screen now, but back to the original motion. Okay, this is what we're voting on. You have to use the microphone, don't be yelling, hollering. Please, if you wanna get up, use the microphone, state your purpose. The last vote. The last vote failed.
Juan Fox, precinct one. I'm gonna, uh, show my ignorance. Reading now, it says we're voting on thirteen, I'm already amended by, right, or we're talking about we're voting on his amendment.
This is his, this is the main motion, we're back to the main motion. Lou Giido's main motion.
The, uh, the, uh, the article. We're voting on the article or voting on the amendment?
No, you're not voting on the budget.
You wanna explain? I'm gonna ask town council to try to explain this one more time. Just for clarity.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the meeting, let me, let me try to state this as simply as I can. Mr. Giido made a motion. Subsequent to that, there was a, a motion to substitute another motion. Town meeting voted on whether or not to substitute Mr. Giido's motion with another motion. That failed. So now we're back to Mr. Giido's original motion. That's all that's on the floor now. And his original motion, which was submitted in writing prior to tonight's meeting, is now, as far as I know, on the screen.
Goodness gracious, I, quite frankly, I thought that when Ms. Campbell suggested a different route, that I said that I thought that that was the motion. I accepted that as my motion. And asked if the seconder would also do that, and, so that's what I thought we were voting on, and I thought that that motion failed, which was my motion. My, I, I concede that my motion did not pass. We're putting people through more trouble than we need to, honestly. I mean, that was what I, that's what I did. I, look, look at, I, someone just said, can I withdraw the motion? I will do that. Let's move on with our lives.
Thank you, okay.
Do you have to have anybody? Why don't you just state, draw was accepted by town unanimously?
Okay, my statement is declaration here by the moderator. Mr. Giido's motion has been withdrawn by town meeting unanimously. We okay with that? All right, now we're back to nine-oh-nine, it was written. Anybody else? We, can we close that account? Okay, so moved. Last one to talk about is Stoughton Public School, page ninety. We jumped to page ninety, and that's Eric Coleman.
Eric Coleman, precinct five, remove the hold, let's vote on the budget and go home.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you all. All right. Yeah, we still... Thank you all for your indulgence, I know we're all tired, but we're just getting the screen ready for Article thirteen for the, uh, the operating budget. Just give us a moment. Please stay, please stay, we need people, if you're a town meeting rep, please stay. We gotta vote the budget, then we can go home. And the, the numbers do not change, right, and then? Nope, it's intact. Yeah, as, as amended by Mr. Anzavino, right, along the way? No, some of these are out of... Yeah. Town meeting reps, just give me a couple more minutes. Okay, we're ready to go? Get your clickers in hand? What's up, George?
Mr. Moderator, just a point of information, what constitutes a quorum at this point
Okay, let's do this, let's, let's do this, let's get the vote first before people leave. Okay, you have your clickers in hand, we ready to vote? Okay, please begin voting for this budget up, up on the screen. This is for the budget. As it was amended previously by John Anzavino. Article thirteen. Congratulate everybody, please.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion passes, one hundred yes, one no, zero abstentions. Thank you all, thank you for your indulgence this evening. I need a motion to, uh...
Well, I've moved that we continue town meeting on Monday, five-nine, at seven o'clock in the high school auditorium.
Do I have a second? Second. All those in favor, voice vote, yes. All those opposed, thank you all. It's been a... Juan Anokian, second in that motion, thank you. Have a...